Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of August 15th, 2013. We will begin our meeting with the flag salute led by County Council Jerry Cardy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Harrell, are you ready to read the statement of meeting procedures?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Thursday, August 15th, 2013. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind, the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be either turned off or put in silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ms. Harrell. And now is the time for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda?
Good morning. Scott Lindgren, Cal Fire, Placer County Fire. I'm the South Division Operations Chief, and I think we've got a little map to show you. I wanted to give you an update on the American fire that's burning up in the canyon, as most of you know. You smell the smoke and see it right now.
So, what does...
Just a couple little updates. Right now, it's right around 5,000 acres, just under. They're calling it about 35% contained. There's close to 1,000 personnel on the fire right now. It's actually being managed by a federal Type II team, incident management team that came out of Southern California, and to date, they've spent about $2 million trying to suppress it. We sent some pictures around earlier in the week from our air attack planes, from the Cal Fire attack planes that were there initially. Hopefully, you got to see some of those. They really put it in perspective of how steep and nasty the terrain is. So, they're having a tough time getting containment on it because they're having a tough time accessing it and figuring out good, safe spots to try and stop it. Right now, good news for us is that Ralston Ridge, which is to the west of the fire, is blacklined and is holding well, so that should keep the fire from progressing further to the west. The big concern right now is that it is progressing to the north, and if I can get the map up, it'll show you some of the land ownership. And where it's going to the north right now is in private timberland with CR Pacific Industry and some other smaller timber companies, so that's definitely a big concern. So, right now, it's probably burned half of the acreages private timberlands, and the other half is actual federal land.
There's that.
That's not it. That's great, though.
Yeah, it's pretty.
Their sky is a lot clearer than ours.
I think it's coming.
And so, as you know, it's a federal incident because it's on the federal DPA, their direct protection area, but there is a joint effort with Cal Fire because of the private lands. And over the last couple days, Cal Fire's been putting more and more resources into it because of the private lands that are at risk. And because of the federal incidents nationwide, there's a couple fires that are over 100,000 acres in Idaho. The drawdown on the California federal resources is pretty high, so they're coming to Cal Fire asking for a lot of help. And just recently, we sent them a lot more this morning, so there's about six aircraft from Cal Fire that are on and off the fire out of the Grass Valley Air Attack Base. There's 24 hand crews, 24 engines, three dozers, and 10 overhead right now for Cal Fire out of the 1,000 people that are there. And so, this map didn't come out very good. If it was colored, it would show you the drainages, but it's in the North Fork of the Middle Fork of the American, Middle-North Fork of the American, if that makes sense. And it's on both sides of the river, which is a concern. And so, the little squiggly line that I drew up there to the top, that kind of shows where the fire has progressed since I got the map a day before yesterday. So, any questions on what's going on out there?
Supervisor Montgomery.
Scott, thank you. And so, the squiggly line represents the just under 5,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do we have any, and it's about a 35% containment right now, do we have any expectation about ultimate size and expectation for timing in terms of, you know...
That's obviously hard to predict, and the weather's going to be a big player. We're looking at a trend with the weather coming, where it's going to be a little bit hotter and drier, a little bit more wind, which is going to hamper those efforts. When they're doing their planning meetings on these big fires, they do what we call is determine different boxes, containment boxes, and right now, they have three different boxes. The smallest box is about 8,000 acres; the largest box is like 40,000 acres. So, we're anticipating it and stopping it somewhere in there. It's just the problem is, is it's not easily accessible, so it's so hard to get to, it's so hard to put our people in on that they're really having a hard time picking spots to try and stop it. The aircraft is really having a hard time because any of the big aircraft that they're bringing in can't get down in those canyons, so they're only good up on the ridges. Day before yesterday, they ordered the V-LAT, which is the 747 that came in, and they were able to help contain and hold Ralston Ridge, which was a really good thing for us because if it got over Ralston Ridge into the Middle Fork, would have caused us a lot more problems. So, I can anticipate smoke out there for probably the next couple weeks, and we're getting a blunt of it, just like Sacramento is, and all the drainages, because everybody knows during the day, once the inversion clears and the pressure's relieved, it rises, goes really high, and then at night, the inversion comes in, and it drops it down all the drainages, and it just flows like water down the drainages, the smoke does, and it just impacts us. So, we're going to have impacts from the smoke for at least a couple more weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Any local strike teams on that fire?
Yeah, there's some local Cal Fire strike teams on the fire. There's no local government strike teams. They've been really selective on the engines because there's not a lot for fire engines to do. It's mostly a hand crew and bulldozer show, and very limited on the areas that they can use the bulldozers. But there has been some local water tenders used from the Auburn area and also Forest Hill area, and then Forest Hill's using their ambulance form over there. They have an incident base camp set up in the town of Forest Hill, and if you guys get some time and would like to tour over there, we'd be more than happy to help you with that.
Good. Any other questions from board members? Okay, thanks for the update, Scott. Appreciate it. Now, it's time for any other public comment. Seeing none, supervisor committee reports. Anybody have any reports? Okay, fine. Now, we'll move to our county executive. Item one, the fiscal year 2013-14 county budget. Ms. Heinzen kicking it off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Holly Heinzen with the county executive office. I'm here before you today to kick off the 13-14 final budget hearings, and I'm very pleased to be here for a couple of reasons. One, the county is well-positioned to meet the challenges that we see upcoming in this next fiscal year and the following fiscal year. We have some reasons for optimism, as you know. We've seen increases in property tax, which are very welcome for the first time since 2008. At the same time, we have some reasons for some caution. We have some challenges ahead of us. They've been well-articulated by the board. Our financial policies are in place that have really helped the county weather the fiscal uncertainties over the last five, six years. We very much appreciate that the board has put those in place and adhered to those policies. The other reason I'm very happy to be here is I'm proud to announce, or to introduce, I should say, Andy Heath, our deputy county executive officer for finance and budget, and he is here for the first time doing the budget hearings. His tenure here has been very short so far, and he's come up to speed very quickly, came with a wealth of experience and depth of knowledge, most recently from the city of Auburn as the finance director, and prior to that, the deputy director for finance for the city of San Jose. So, we're very pleased that he's here and will be providing the presentation today, and I think we're keeping it short, so I'm keeping my comment short. And with that, I will turn it over to Andy. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Good morning, Mr. Heath. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Andy Heath, and I'm the deputy county executive officer for finance, administration, and budget. Very pleased to be here today. This is actually my one-month anniversary with the county. Here I am. Before I actually get started with the presentation, I just want to say a special thank you to the staff in the county executive office. They are by far one of the best staffs that I've worked with in my 23-year career in public service, and they have brought me up to speed very quickly. They're very knowledgeable, and they sometimes work tirelessly to make sure that I understood an issue if needed to be. I'd also like to thank Graham Canouse, who provided some leadership and direction in just a transitory process of trying to move from him to me, and his help was instrumental to this process as well. So, with that, we'll get started. What I'd like to do is just kind of give you an outline of what we're going to be doing today. First thing we're going to do is just go over the budget development timeline and kind of where we are in that timeline, and we'll go over some budget development policy considerations that the board has put out there and that we have incorporated into the budget development process through today. Give you a fiscal update of where we ended up the fiscal year in 2012-13 and what the actual amounts were. Go over some of the changes between the proposed budget that was presented to the board on June 4th and today, which is when the final budget adjustments will be presented to the board. Give you some departmental updates that will focus on highlighted services and programs. And what's going on here is we're actually making a change in the way we do the department presentations, trying to get everything accomplished in one day as opposed to multiple days as part of these budget workshops. Process will consist of the departments actually getting up and speaking, not so much about the fiscal changes in their budget, but more so the programs that they work with and the priorities and goals that they have in those programs, and how the board may, the public may gauge the success of the implementation of those goals and priorities. This is a key element of the future of priority-based budgeting, which is a county executive initiative, and by all means, this is not the approach we may end up taking, but it's just a hypothetical approach to kind of segue into the whole process. And then, we will do the... Then, we will talk about the board direction and the final budget. Sorry about that. Okay, some of the key dates and timelines as part of the budget development process. In January 2013, the CEO pushed out the CEO rollout to all the departments as an internal process. We also conducted a budget priority and challenges workshop in February, and that was with the board. In February and March, CEO initiated budget planning and strategy to all the internal departments countywide. In March 2013, we put out the multi-year budget framework, and there was a presentation to the board on that, and that's a key element of the presentation today. In June 2013, as I mentioned, on June 4th, the proposed budget came before the board, and then today's final budget workshop is being held, and in September, next month, on September 10th, you will consider the final budget at a public hearing. Okay, moving along in the budget development process, some of the things that we considered when putting the final budget together is the policy considerations and fiscal priorities of the board. One of those main policy considerations is fiscal and operational sustainability. The way the county does that is we use a multi-year budget framework that's been put in place. It was put in place some time ago, where we actually go in and look at the sustainability of operations from a multi-year perspective moving forward. This demonstrates where the long-term systemic gaps may exist in budgetary priorities in the context of anticipated revenues. Instrumental towards developing the ongoing and sustainable funding strategy for major projects, including the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility. This plan was put in place and is developed to hopefully get to a point where we have operational sustainability for the South Placer facility, and that'll be demonstrated in a slide that I put together for you. We also looked at priority-based... We also have a conservative approach to budgeting, where we budget revenues and expenditures on a conservative level. We use one-time revenues for one-time costs, and we provide flexibility to adjust to economic fluctuations by funding reserves at a very high level. All of these are board considerations. We also looked at infrastructure investment planning, where we prioritize projects consistent with board policies and funding availability and alignment of funding for projects with potential economic value and return on investment. And this is key because the planning process better enables the distribution of available funding resources that may be available towards projects with potential economic value or return on investment, and that's key. Then, we also looked at priority-based budgeting, and that's where we are going to try to begin to communicate the compelling public value of countywide services to the board and to the public, and align departmental programs and services with those priorities moving In putting the budget together, we also took into account a couple of things. One of the things is that we realize that the county is positioned relatively well from a fiscal perspective. County has prudent reserve and contingency policies put in place, where we're able to adjust to economic fluctuations over time, given the reserve policies and contingencies that we have. We also have an improving revenue outlook in the shadow of the Great Recession. In 2008, when the Great Recession hit, revenues were significantly impacted, and we had to adjust to that. Because of the policies that we have, that the county had in place, we were able to adjust to the downturn in the revenues while not impacting service levels to a great degree. We also have had prior board action to mitigate current cost pressures as part of the county being positioned fiscally well. One example I'd like to give you on that is the upfront funding OPEB policy, where the county has had in place for a few years, where we've actually been able to, with that policy, reduce the OPEB liability from $212 million in '08-'09 to $136 million at the end of fiscal year 12-13. And that's key because the unfunded liability has decreased $76 million over a four-year period by, just by doing, by prepaying some of the OPEB costs. We also want to maintain a watchful eye on future cost drivers. Employee benefit costs associated with retirement and health will be going up. Retirement costs will be going up between 1% and 1.5% of salary over the next several years for the county, and health costs continue to go up as well. State and federal budget and legislation monitoring is something the CEO's office does quite a bit of. Although the state and federal budgets don't have a huge impact on the county this year, remains to be seen in out-years whether or not, like in the past, the budget will be impacted by state and federal budget actions. And then, we have cost drivers associated with the ongoing funding for the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility, otherwise known as SBASEF. The funding model that's been put in place is consistent with the multi-year model, where we tried to come up with a sustainable approach to funding the South Placer facility, and that is a cost driver that we are keeping a very close eye on. Looking at some of the changes as of the end of fiscal year 12-13, associated with per capita revenue, that is, the revenue that's collected in the county on a per capita basis, and this is adjusted for inflation, so that it's a relative. The things I want to point out are the taxes have gone up about $2 per capita, and these increases indicate that there's a slight recovery going on. Increases in property tax and TOT, real estate transfer taxes and sales tax make up that amount. Licenses and permits remain relatively flat. Intergovernmental transfers, there's a drop of about $9 per capita there, and that's due to a decrease in state and federal aid related to community revitalization, low moderate housing, and road projects and construction payments that come into the county. And then, other revenue, there was an adjustment in the other revenue in fiscal year 2010-11 to account for a reduction of redevelopment funding that was taken out of the operating funds and put into a successor agency fund, redevelopment obligation trust fund. So, that's why you see the significant drop in other revenues there as well. Per capita operating expenditures, public protection is flattening out after a decline from about $140 per capita expenditure, $123 in 2012-13 versus $124 in 2011-12. Other programs experienced increases. HHS, health and public service, health and public assistance increased by about $1 per capita, and public ways and facilities increased by about $3 per capita. General government expenditures decreased from $50 to $47 per capita, and that's related to housing, open space, and engineering services, surveying costs. Fiscal year 2012-13 results, looking at some of the updates since the proposed budget. As I mentioned earlier, we have closed the books for 2012-13. All of the accruals on both the revenue side and the expenditure side have been recognized and posted, and we've updated the carryover fund balance for all funds as a result of that. Fund balance is typically relied on as a funding source, a one-time funding source for the following year's budget. It's important to understand when you take into the context of the fund balance carryovers that we have coming in for predominantly the general fund and the public safety fund. Looking at where the carryover fund balances actually ended up in the general fund, we anticipated a carryover fund balance of $26 million, actually achieved a carryover fund balance of $28.4. In the public safety fund, we anticipated $8.2 million coming in and, or ending with $8.2 million, and we ended with 10 point, just under $10.2 million. Most of the increases in the fund balance or the carryover fund balances are due to maintaining funded positions vacant over the period of the year. We also have unspent professional services contracts and services and supplies budgets. There's also the contingencies that were not spent during the year, and those will carry over into the next year, and then there's some additional revenue that has come in Moving forward to fiscal year 2013-14 final budget adjustments, looking at otherwise known as FBAs, this is the net FBA for the general fund. We have about $3.3 million in net revenues as a result of the fund balance adjustments that are being recommended as part of the final budget. The $3.3 million in net revenues is made up of an offsetting revenue and expenditure newly funded requests related to HHS programmatic services. These are ongoing revenues to be associated with ongoing expenditures. There are four positions in the child system of care, four positions in the adult system of care, and 40 positions in the human services budgets that are being recommended as part of, as part of that FBA. We also have additional AB 109 funding coming in as part of that. It's $443,000. Most of the expenditures associated with these programs are related to mental health, CalWorks, CalFresh, and Medi-Cal-related activities. There's also an additional $1.5 million in realignment funding coming into HHS, and this is going to be an ongoing, sustainable revenue source that comes in. This will go to offset, offset the additional, offset county costs, net county costs at some point in time moving forward, and also to provide funding for potentially a client aid reserve moving forward. Also have rebudgets and a revenue carryover of about $843,000 on the revenue side, $894,000 on the expenditure side. Most of these rebudgets are related to the OES grants, Office of Emergency Services grants, and then the difference in the expenditures and the revenues is related to a $50,000 expenditure rebudget for maintenance at the舒适 office, building maintenance. We have net revenue changes of $1.3 million. That net revenue is a result of additional property tax and TOT taxes that's come in, and that's offset by reductions in the A-87 charges coming into the general fund. There's some technical changes and other, $1.1 million in expenditures and $1.7 million in revenues. Basically, all the balance of the technical changes relate to new requests for additional funds. There's some upfront OPEB associated with the clerk recorder's filling of some positions. There's also some ballot changes that are being considered in the clerk recorder's office, business grant, biomass grant for planning in the CEDRA, and OES homeland security grant for $379,000. And that's offset by the expenditures associated with those grants and the funds for which those grants are received. Also built into this is a reduction in expenditures related to an OPEB adjustment that was done as a result of receiving the actuarial study related to the OPEB discount rate. It was determined that the 7.25% discount rate that was being used at proposed budget could be changed to 7.61 while maintaining a relatively high level of conservatism in the budget for the OPEB expenditures. We did, we are recommending a change for that, and that results in a savings to the general fund. So, the net FBA for the general fund is about $3.3 million in additional revenues. When you combine the unassigned carryover fund balance and the net final budget adjustments together, you have $5.8 million, just under $5.8 million available for one-time board priorities. We'll go over that in another slide. In the public safety fund, I just want to start off by saying that with the proposed budget, there was a $1.6 million revenue that was tran, that was reallocated to, $1.6 million in revenue was actually reallocated within the public safety fund to cover estimated costs for opening the South Placer facility. Based on the final budget, that $1.6 million revenue transfer was, revenue redistribution was actually changed to $800,000 based on some additional revenues that came into the public safety fund. As a result of that, there are some additional revenues that are coming into both the district attorney and the probation that weren't previously there with the revenue redistribution. As part of the final budget, we're recommending that the $1.6 million that was made available for the, where the South Placer criminal, the South Placer facility be transferred back to those departments. With the rebudgets in the public safety fund, you have $1.2 million in expenditures that are being rebudgeted. Those are all related to grant expenditures for rural counties, cops, CalMet, court security, juvenile detention facility cameras, criminal justice master plan consultant costs, and two replacement vehicles for probation. And these are all, these are all expenditures for revenues which had previously been received and dropped to fund balance in fiscal year 12-13. The net of all the other activity, which starts with the $89,000 and works its way down for all of the departments within the public safety fund, is $703,000 in expenditure requests and $526,000 in additional revenues coming in, and that basically goes to cover for the DA, five upfront OPEB for five employees, offset by the OPEB reduction, as I mentioned, that also comes in for the public safety fund like the general fund. We also have some cameras and AB 109 pass-throughs to local law enforcement, and six months of funding for three positions in the probation department. And then, the sheriff's officers, additional grant-related expenditures offset by grant and other revenue sources and OPEB reductions moving forward. Looking at the public safety fund as a whole, you see that the unassigned carryover fund balance, $3.7 million, and that's made up of the fund balance on, that was actually carried over, and then a provision for reserves that was set in the proposed budget combined, so that's still available. So, it's $3.7 million in unassigned carryover fund balance, offset by $1.4 million in net FBA adjustments to the public safety fund, which leaves $2.3 million available for board-identified one-time priorities. which leaves two point three million dollars available for board identified one-time priorities. Looking at the public safety fund and the general fund and the five-year modeling, the multi-year modeling schedule, what I wanted to point out here is that this projects where we're moving as we go forward with the model. Looking at the general fund as a whole, you can see down here that this is the carryover fund balance and the net FBA adjustments for fiscal year twelve-13-14 that we're considering today, likewise for public safety down here. Those amounts are available for distribution to one-time priorities. What I wanted to point out in this model is that moving forward, there is a significant issue associated with the bottom line in the general fund where in 2018-19, we projected the general fund will be in a deficit mode, and in the public safety fund will also be in a deficit mode in 2016-17 moving out. This is related to trying to achieve a plan to fund on a sustainable basis the opening of the South Placer facility. The opening of the South Placer facility is predicated upon many things. It's predicated upon departments in both the general fund and the public safety fund absorbing a significant amount of cost moving forward. It's also predicated upon the general fund redirecting a portion of its fund balance to the public safety fund for operations of South Placer. And finally, it, it's contingent on the public safety fund reducing its reserves as well to fund the ongoing operation of South Placer. So what this story tells is that we need to really watch what's going on with revenues and expenditures in the context of moving forward so that hopefully at some point in time in the future, to make the sustainable operation of South Placer a reality, revenues will outstrip expenditures so that it can, we can remain sustainable moving forward. One of the things that the, the board can consider with the one-time funding that's available in the general fund is achieving a target of the five percent reserve, target reserve that's set by policy. As you can see, in the past, we were at that reserve target, and then during the Great Recession, we actually used reserves to mitigate the service impacts to, to the community. And this year, with a three point four to three point five million dollars, the county can get back to that five percent reserve target level and have that fully funded at the five percent level. One of the challenges that we see moving forward is with the library fund. Library fund is estimated to have about four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars remaining in reserves at the end of this fiscal year on June 30th, 2014. You can see the red line, the red line is the expenditures associated with the library fund, and it's above in the future the operating costs associated with the library fund, the contributions that are coming into the library fund. As of right now, the general fund contributes a good portion of the library fund revenue sources by funding all of the A-87, all but one hundred thousand of the A-87 costs associated with the library, and then also funding the librarian. And those, those revenue sources are going to be about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars less than what's anticipated for the library fund moving forward. This will be coming back to the board in, in a board workshop in the future, and we'll be talking about the library fund to discuss the sustainability of the library fund. Looking at the recommended final budget, in twelve-13, the final budget was seven hundred and thirty point two million dollars. The recommended budget for thirteen-14 is about seven hundred and fifteen million dollars, about fifteen million dollars less. That amount is made up of predominantly of a reduction in, in capital funding that, that is going to be in the budget, and I have a slide that will actually go through that. This is just to give the board a, an overview of where the budget is in the operating funds. The general fund and the public safety fund make up about seventy-four percent of, of the entire operating fund budget. Comparing the budget from, the final budget for twelve-13, moving forward to thirteen-14, some of the things that are noted in there is there's four point seven percent increase in the general fund. At the proposed budget, it was two point two percent, and it's now four point seven percent only because of the additional fund balance adjustments that are being recommended to the board, and that's heavily associated with the HHS component. We also have the public safety fund, additional one point nine million in FBA adjustments there from last year to proposed, the increase was two point six percent, but now it's three point nine. Capital projects fund, we have three point two million in FBA expenditure recommendations coming into the capital projects fund, and in the road fund, there's an additional five point one million dollars in FBA adjustments. And then increases to reserves and designations includes, what's included in the three point nine million dollars at the recommended budget is the two point three million dollars that remains for one, one-time priorities in the public safety fund, plus the distribution of, of fund balances to reserves for all of the other funds with the exception of the general fund. The general fund is not yet in here, has not been included. Looking at some of the other funds in the public ways and facilities fund, otherwise known as the road fund, we have some additions to road resurfacing, a lot of additions to road resurfacing, and then some smaller expenditures related to use of unassigned fund balance towards a Reusa road project and cost alone of landside repairs. We also use a designated reserve for the final payment for the Cabin Creek up in Tahoe. Capital projects fund, we have a use of unassigned fund balance to various projects during 2013-14, and we also fund some additional SMD three regional sewer costs that, for which the revenue sources will be an Army Corps of Engineer grant and SRF impending funding that's coming in. Looking at the position counts from, from year to year, we have twenty-five hundred and three recommended funded positions. This is an increase of about fifty-two and a half positions since the proposed budget was presented before the board. HHS makes up a large contingent of those positions at forty-eight positions. We have an additional one-half of a position for the county council's office, and then probation is also going to be receiving a, is recommended to receive a refunding of three positions from the four positions they had defunded at the proposed budget related to the one point six million dollar revenue, potential revenue redistribution issue associated with the funding for South Placer. Since that was moved back to eight hundred thousand from one point six million, the probation department would like to get three of the four positions back. With that, that concludes the baseline fiscal presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, Supervisor Montgomery.
Andy, could you just go back one slide, please? How do we define community and cultural system? Which shows the four point one decrease?
Community and cultural system is made up of facility services, parks, museum, farm library, the farm advisor in the library.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Uller.
I'm going to ask you to jump all the way back to slide seven.
I'm sorry?
Slide seven, if you would.
Slide seven?
Just jump back to slide seven. Maybe I'm, maybe it's wrong, remember? Let's go try.
Which, which slide is it?
Per capita revenue. Slide in my binder is different from the slide.
I apologize. This slide actually changed from what was handed out with the board packets based on a finding that we had just yesterday.
Oh, okay.
I apologize for that.
All right. So what, what's accurate is what's depicted up here, not what's depicted in our, in our board binder? Is that right? This is, this is the accurate one?
This is the accurate one, that's correct.
All right. And that addresses, just seeing the difference between that, nope. Why does that keep doing that to you? It keeps hopping forward on a.
I don't know. It can fix on its own.
All right. Well, seeing that, that difference between what's there and what's here, I don't have a question anymore. Thank you.
Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, thanks a lot, Andy, for this intro. I, I do think it may be helpful when you bring this back to have another pie chart that would show the overall budget, and then also what our costs are with regards to salaries and medical benefits and all those kinds of things to show exactly what the county is responsible for with regards to employee costs as a percentage of the overall seven hundred and twenty million dollar budget.
Okay. Any other questions? Don't see any more questions, so what do we do now? Do we go up to? All right, now we'll move to department presentations. And like, leading off is the Land Use System, Community Development Resource Agency. Are we on? Lauren Clark.
Morning Chairman Holmes, members of the board. Lauren Clark, System Director with the Community Development Resource Agency. Here on behalf of Michael Johnson, who couldn't be here today, he's actually in Missouri, and by chance, if Michael's listening in, I think we've got this covered today. We have the management team, and the reason why is we have the entire management team with SEEDRA here with us this morning, the folks who really do the business of SEEDRA are all here. To my left is Donna Kirkpatrick, the Administrative Services Officer, and behind me, Paul Thompson, Deputy Director Planning, Rick Eri, Engineering Manager, Dan Dotte, Engineering Manager, Chuck Grant, County Surveyor for at least a little while longer, we don't know exactly when, but a little while longer. I did ask Chuck if this was his last budget hearing, and he did say yes. Tim Wagner, Chief Building Official, Kelly Berger, GIS IT Manager, and Brett Story, Management Analyst on Biomass and Water and Energy Policy. To, to look at the past, to look at where we're going, I think it's important to reflect upon the economy. And even as the state and regional economy slowly recover from the most recent recession, this past fiscal year has been a very active one for the agency. While implementation of large-scale land development projects in the West have remained relatively slow, staff has seen increased activity in smaller projects as well as a fairly significant amount of activity, particularly with residential building permits. Before we saw this shift in the economy last year, staff was able to focus its time and intention on projects of county-wide importance. For example, the Cabin Creek biomass facility was approved without litigation, bringing a much-needed energy generation project to the Tahoe area, something that we had planned on for a number of years. Through extensive public outreach, good staff work, the public learned the value of this biomass facility and what it will bring not only to the region, but also the value in improving the health of the forest throughout the Tahoe Basin and the Tahoe area. The work program for the updates to the Tahoe Basin community plans continues to forward in a very positive direction. Over the past year, staff has held more than twenty-four community meetings where the public has actively participated in the development of the documents that will guide the future of development within the Tahoe Basin. The work program has been a very positive experience for staff and the public, and the level of community engagement sets an example for what's possible with future county projects. Also, significant staff resources will continue to be directed to this community plan process over the coming fiscal year to assure the highest level of community involvement and to assure the successful completion of the process. Agency staff continues to work on the development application for the village at Squaw Creek specific plan. This project proposes large-scale modifications to the land uses in the Squaw Valley Resort, and staff continues to work with the project applicant to modify the design of the project in response to concerns of the community. Agency staff are also working on the application of a North Star Mountain Master Plan. Vale Resorts, the operator of the North Star Ski Area, has submitted an application to identify the major on-mountain projects that will be required or required for the ultimate build-out of the resort. The draft EIR for this project is expected to be in circulation later this year with hearings before the planning commission and board anticipated in 2014. Also in the Mardis Valley area, the staff has been working with East West Partners and Sierra Pacific Industries on a potential development applications on lands adjacent to the North Star Ski Area. This development application proposes the transfer of residential land uses originally allocated in the 1970s from the east side of Highway 267 to the west side of Highway 267 adjacent to the existing North Star Resort. Property owners have been working diligently with the environmental community and other local interest groups, and staff anticipates that a formal land development application will be submitted in the very near future. Also consistent with one of the county executive officers' organizational initiative for economic development and community engagement, the agency participated in a brainstorming session with business leaders from the Tahoe area in order to determine how best to address concerns regarding improvements to customer service and business development within that region. One of the suggestions from the business community was the need for an ombudsman to provide a point of contact for customers who need assistance in permit processing. County staff saw great value in this recommendation, and this, and the agency has implemented the ombudsman position in the Tahoe office. The purpose of this position is to provide a simple and accessible venue for customers to get help and resolve issues from a relatively complex land development process, particularly in the Tahoe Basin. The primary role of the ombudsman is to work collaboratively with county staff and customers to resolve impediments to getting development and business established. To date, the ombudsman program has been well-received by the business community, and there have been some great successes with the program. Moving over to the west side of the county, staff has spent much of the past year working with the property owners of Placer Vineyards, the Regional University, the Riola Vineyard specific plan, working on an updated finance and urban services fee program. As much has changed with these projects, since they were approved, the county and the property owners agreed that there was merit in analyzing and reanalyzing the assumptions dating back to 2007 related to the provision of urban facilities and services. We are working with the property owners in a deliberative and collaborative process that's focused on the level of service, the timing and delivery of those services, costs associated with the provision of those services. Much progress has been made, and we anticipate that we will bring that analysis to the board in the very near future. As the board is also aware, the county staff continues to work on the Placer County Conservation Plan with a particular emphasis on, with a particular emphasis on the second agency review draft document. We will continue to work with the stakeholders on that particular process and, and bring that as an update to the board, we anticipate in October of this year. Terms of the requested final budget adjustments, there are relatively few in number and, more than minor as it relates to net county costs. At this point in time, we are bringing to the board a biomass facility, a series of program dollars that are basically grant-derived, so there's no net county costs there that will move it from the entitlement phase into the early development of the plan and sort of the engineering drawings, the site plan work. We also have a master stewardship agreement with the US Forest Service Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit that was previously approved by the Board, and then preparation of a series of template habitat management plans for the PCCP. And again, there is no net county cost for any of these. In terms of highlighted department priorities, I don't see that on the screen. While the last year has been a year of maintenance for the agency, the current fiscal year will be a year of change, from ongoing efforts at the, on the Placer Vineyards and Riola Vineyards and other West County specific plans to the revitalization of the Bigford Ranch Project as it begins to move forward. The inventory of lots in the valley continue to dwindle, and the interest in undeveloped approved projects is gaining interest. Staff resources are committed not only to sort of revitalizing these projects, but also to continue to work on the county-wide projects of, of importance such as the PCCP, the Sheridan Community Plan, the Tahoe Basin Community Plans, and others. And if we could go one more slide forward, there we are.
All right.
I think we're, got everything rejiggered back in place.
You're doing good.
Key, one of the key issues for us over the coming year is the board is aware staffing levels in the agencies, in this agency have changed significantly over the past four to five years in response to changes in workload and the economy. As staffing levels were adjusted to match the decrease in land development applications, the current upswing in the economy has presented an opportunity for the agency, agency to reexamine its staffing levels, to see where best to place needed staffing resources to best serve the needs of the county residents now and into the future. This reexamination is also. This reexamination is also focused on succession planning. As might be expected with an upswing in land development activities, the agency has experienced an increase in revenues. For the past fiscal year, the agency generally met or exceeded its projected revenues, and similar results are expected for the coming fiscal year as new land development applications are filed. To address the anticipated increase in land development activity and to address our succession issues, agency staff is working with the CEO office to analyze staffing resources and to determine what additional staffing may be required to match the current in-anticipated workload. As part of that, and in concert with CEO staff, we have recently completed a staffing analysis of the needs for the Tahoe area and will conduct a similar analysis for the balance of the county. In reviewing staffing needs of the agency, much emphasis will be given how the addition of staffing resources can improve agency service delivery. As discussed at the board's February 26 workshop, the public continues to have an expectation for increased service delivery from staff, and the agency wants to ensure that the right staff are placed in the right positions to meet the public and the board's expectations. We're pleased to have this opportunity to present our accomplishments over the past year, as well as to highlight the work programs that we anticipate we will work on in the coming year. I want to thank the CEO staff for their support and their patience during the budgeting process, and obviously support the board for their support for this agency, and then most importantly, to support the hard work of the SEDRA staff as they serve and do the public's business. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Good job, Lauren. Any questions from board members? I think you nailed just about everything you had to, so I think we're good.
And hopefully stayed under our seven minutes.
That's right. You were moving right along, which is not withstanding. Now, if we can move the sliding presentation to Facility Services. Hey, it worked.
I'm pleased, I'm pleased that there isn't a picture of Ken Grimm up there. Chairman Holmes, members of the board, Mary Dietrich, Director of Facility Services. With me today is Valerie Bain, our Department's Administrative Services Manager, who is expert in all matters related to our budget, as well as other members from our executive team and management team. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of the department as your board considers the last recommendations of the fiscal, fiscal year 2013-14 budget. This process, as always, is a significant undertaking and has taken concerted effort on behalf of all that have been involved. We've had a little change in, in terms of the processes, and we appreciate so much the leadership that we've gotten from the county executive's office, our analysts who have helped us very much through this process in identifying priorities and helping us articulate the compelling public values of, of the programs that we provide. Your board's policy direction derived not only from these budget discussions, but from consideration of our board items throughout the past year have helped us identify and shape our priorities that are embodied in this budget, and as always, we appreciate the support that your board provides to our department. To many people, the budget may look like a bunch of numbers and graphs and charts and so forth, but to us, it's the work that we do, it's the projects that we proceed on, and it's, it's of critical importance and far beyond the numbers that are articulated there. As you're aware, Facility Services is one of the larger departments in the county with seven operating divisions that are very, very complex, and our budgets are complex as well. As a consequence, the number of final budget adjustments that you're considering today are attributable to our department. And in that regard, they are very briefly as follows. We have a request for custodial services for Pride Industries at the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility. A little bit of the discussion that Andy mentioned earlier in his presentation, that's a big initiative that is moving forward. For these services, it was a late emerging issue relative to your board's decision to begin occupancy of that facility in early 2014, and consequently, the funding for, for the Pride Services is part of the final budget request. There's a request for augmenting funding for CGL Kitchell, which is a contract for maintenance at the Maine Auburn Jail. Approval of the primary contract was presented to your board in May and took effect in July. And if you recall, at that time, there was a shortfall for some discretionary additional services. And at, at that point in time, the agreement was is that we would be reviewing with county executive's office final, the condition of the county of the final budget, and are in a position with this budget to recommend those, approval of that funding. Embodied in, in the request is also Ranger Services at the Bear River Campground. Funding for Ranger Services was included in our proposed budget for Hidden Falls, but similar services for the Bear River Campground were deferred again until this particular process. Again, as Andy previously mentioned, there are additions in the capital projects fund that consist of an increase in appropriations for SMD III Regional Sewer Project, and this accounts for funding from the SRF and Treasury that was not confirmed until after the proposed budget was approved. And as well, there are other smaller adjustments to capital projects. In our environmental utilities budget, cancellation of reserves is recommended as an office, for an office remodel consolidation, which is now possible due to the recent relocation of the grand jury from office space that was located adjacent to our main offices. And lastly, there is funding for a one-time payment for deferred COLA to ecology that is recommended out of the solid waste budget reserves. Because of the funding sources of these final budget adjustments, there are no new impacts on the general fund if your board should approve these final budget adjustments. As the county moves towards priority-based budgeting, our department is committed to identifying and articulating the compelling public values and the effectiveness of the services of the programs that we provide. In this regard, Facility Services identified as one of our priorities, and this was shared, or one of our priorities was a continuing implementation of efficient service delivery methods. Two of our requests in our final budget adjustments are in furtherance of this priority. Those are embodied in the Ranger Services contract and the CGL Kitchell contract. As Supervisor Montgomery is aware, there have been continuous issues at the Bear River Campground that affect public safety, the physical environment of the site, and clearly the public's perception of this as a county recreational facility. Frankly, this is due in large part to the limited service levels that we're able to provide at this location. With the approval of Ranger Services at the campground, we believe we will be able to cost-effectively increase our presence at this site and positively affect the facility's reputation. We believe that the compelling public value we will be able to demonstrate with this investment is that there'll be an improved visitor experience, undoubtedly, enhanced oversight of the facility, and frankly, reduced law enforcement requirements at this particular facility. So we intend with all of our programs to continue to expand the discussion and articulation and communication of the public value that we provide as part of the, for the programs that we provide as part of the department. On behalf of Facility Services, I know that each one of our divisions is looking forward to implementing the work plans and projects that are embodied in this final budget, and appreciate your board's continuous support of the programs and our department.
All right, thank you, Mary. Any questions from board members? Supervisor Montgomery?
I really want to say thank you for the Ranger Services at the Bear River Campground. This really has been an ongoing issue, not just in terms of visitor experience and facility oversight, but surrounding neighbors, including across the river into Nevada County. I get quite a lot of phone calls from Nevada County residents about issues at the Bear River Campground, and I think this is going to take a lot off our plates and be a really, really positive cost savings measure, so thank you.
Exactly. And this really is a small item. I think it's a $20,000 investment. I think it's going to go a long way. It's just representative of the kinds of programs and the value that, that our, our department in the programs that we provide to the public, and we, we look forward to be able to articulate those values and really have some good outcomes. This is just a small example, but it really is one that's, that's very much in the forefront right now.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none. Thank you, Mary. And now, you can come forward. They've been trying to get you up there three or four times already.
Can't get rid of me.
Good morning, Ken.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. My name's Ken Grimm with the Department of Public Works, and appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit today about, well, just reiterating some of our program purposes for everybody, take a few minutes, and also talk about our final budget adjustments we did, and then where we're at with priority-based budgeting within the department. First off, we basically do have four areas that we provide services in for the county residents. We operate and maintain the transportation system, the roadway network. We also provide transit services throughout the county. We provide the vehicles that all county employees use to provide their services, and finally, we protect the county's surface and groundwater from stormwater pollutants. And maybe we'll go to the next slide, since I don't see a button here. Some of our, oh, there we go. Some of our final budget adjustments, most of our final budget adjustments for the year really are pretty administrative. There are quite a few of them. Most of them have to do with projects being carried over. What I would like to take special note of is our road fund balance. This year, we were able to generate a little over $500,000 in road fund balance. We don't use that for ongoing types of operations. We use, we treat it as a one-time expense, and we'll treat it as a one-time dollar amount that we'll do, that we'll budget for. This year, we also wrote improvements, a project you were board-approved several weeks ago. We're delegating $100,000 to that project. We also, this past winter, had a landslide out on Casaloma Road off of Interstate 80. Very little-used road, but for those that live off that road, it's a very important road. We are preparing, in the final stages of preparing a remedial fix to that roadway, and we're allocating $200,000 to make that repair, a long-term repair. And then with the remainder, $230,000, we want to allocate that to road resurfacing. Not a lot of money, but it's what we have available. $230,000 is about the equivalent of one mile of overlay or about eight to nine miles of various chip and slurry seals. Enough to make a start, not exactly what we prefer to see, but it is what we have available. Maybe we can go to the next. There we go. And so now talking a little bit about priority-based budgeting and some of the things that we're doing, identifying, I think we were asked to identify a couple of programs today and let you know what, how we plan moving forward, and then some of the things that we actually are doing today. Our largest program that we operate, again, is operating and maintaining our roadway network. There we go. And so, we're trying to allocate those resources as best as possible. When we are looking at our roadway network, we look at three areas. We look at how are we managing congestion on that roadway? We look at the safety of that roadway, and then we look at how well are we maintaining it? Are we being good stewards of the resources to maintain that roadway going into the future? Couple of success measurements that we'll be looking at, and actually, some of those we already do look at, is our average pavement condition index. We also look at the annual amount of collisions, reportable collisions that occur on our roadways, and then in the future, measuring traffic congestion. We do that site-by-site, but today, we do not do that system-wide. We don't have a good way of doing that. So an example of something we do do today is our average pavement condition index. So this shows over time, over the last 10 years approximately, how we were very stable, we had some influx of money through Proposition 1B approved by California voters, as well as the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, how our pavement qualities kind of went up. And then, since the recession, we've actually been going down. We haven't had the same amount of resources to put back into the system, and so we are slowly degrading down. Something we are going to have to address over time. We're trying to address by putting some more money into road resurfacing, as money allows. Why that's important? This just goes, and I showed this to you in the spring, same idea again of how we keep track of our roadways, how roads deteriorate over time. A brand-new road deteriorates very slowly. All of a sudden, it starts deteriorating very quickly, and then at some point, you can't get much worse than that, and so it flattens out again. The important thing to remember about this curve is when you do things, when the road is, before it goes off what I call that cliff, you do some minor maintenance, very cost-effective maintenance, you bring it back up. As you go down the curve, you need to do more expensive forms of maintenance in order to regain that quality. So it's the same idea as oil changes on your car. You do it now, not so, so much that it runs better, but you do it to make sure that your car lasts longer. Same with a lot of the pavement treatments that we do. How about we go to the next slide? Another area we look in is traffic safety. We, probably seven, eight years ago, we instituted our traffic accident analysis system, and part of that was looking at our hotspot areas for collisions and trying to find cost-effective methods to minimize accidents at those locations. The past years, I've shared specific locations, Mount Vernon Road, Willarva Road, where we had dramatic drops with some modest improvements that being done. From a system-wide, though, this shows reportable traffic collisions within the unincorporated county. Through the CHP, we get all of those reports. We keep a database, and we are constantly, every year, looking at our top hotspots. This shows how overall traffic collisions have dropped significantly over the last seven to eight years since we instituted that system. I think a lot of positive, that's not just because of the work we've done. This is a group effort. Really like to thank the CHP, and as the traffic enforcement portion of that, but working together through engineering and enforcement and education, bringing our traffic collisions down overall within this county. This doesn't even talk about the fact that our population in the county is actually increasing. So to have our collisions go down while population's increasing is even better than what this stat or statistic might show. So these are a couple of areas we continue to look at. We will continue to look at that, and I think will be the basis of our priority-based budgeting, how we show the value we provide to our citizens. Another program area, providing transit services. And in the future, we'd be measuring those really by the amount of ridership we generate, people who take our transit buses, and how far do they take our buses? Because for every mile they go, that's one less mile that a car's being driven. And in addition to that, we're going to be looking at the efficiency of the resource, the cost of that service. So the cost per passenger is a very important metric for us. And then finally, on-time performance. Are we getting to, getting people where they need to be on time? Just an example of ridership. Ridership has, we carry over 800,000 passengers today on our transit system, which is an increase of over 30% over the last 10 years. So I think some very good trends as far as continuing to go up. We look forward in the next couple of years of exceeding the 1 million mark, which will be a big milestone for our system. That's a little bit about what we're doing. I think with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have, but if not, we'll turn it over to the next department.
Any questions from board members? Yep. Don't see any. Did a good job, Ken. Thank you so much. Josh Hunsinger, your Agriculture Commissioner.
Good morning, board. Thank you for the opportunity to come here today. I'm Josh Hunsinger, the Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Ways and Majors. With me today also is my Deputy Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer, Ed King, who's very instrumental in helping me to prepare the department's budget. So I'll jump right into it. I would just like to say that our, our department is doing well. Our revenues look stable and look like they may continue to be strong and perhaps increase. We're very engaged in succession planning. We're, we're well into it. I think last year, I shared some plans we had, and we're going forward and implementing those plans with our staff. Our agricultural marketing program is, is doing very well. The last couple of weeks, we've had some real tremendous successes. I think we've had Placer County agriculture on, on TV four times in one week, two weeks ago. So that was, that was a big thing, and that really continues to gain more traction and continue to improve. A couple of things you don't see up here with the core programs. We have our two commissions. We have the Agricultural Commission, as well as the Fish and Game Commission that the department oversees, and those conditions were, or commissions were continuously looking to improve and bring forward items that commissions can formulate recommendations to bring to your board as, as appropriate. This slide focuses on our core programs of agricultural regulation to prevent pests, pesticide regulation to protect human health and safety, the environment, and the workers who apply those pesticides, and then all of our... who apply those pesticides, and then all of our programs focused on equity in the marketplace, such as weights and measures, our farmers' market regulation, organic regulation, those kinds of things that provide that level playing field for businesses. So, our first highlighted priority has to do with pesticide regulation. The Placer County Agriculture Department is the primary agency in the county tasked with regulating pesticides. We do work in partnership with State Department of Pesticide Regulation, but we are the on-the-ground implementation of all programs. Placer County has approximately 250,000 pounds of pesticides applied on an annual basis within the county, and that's everything from agriculture to landscape uses to structural pest control. Doesn't include homeowner products, but they are a, in the grand scheme of things, a less significant portion of the overall pesticide load that's being applied. We seek to obviously have all pesticides applied in a safe and legal manner that protects the environment, that protects the public, and protects the workers, as I mentioned, who handle those pesticides. We have some priorities. The percentage, the first one is the percentage of unannounced pesticide use monitoring inspections that result in compliance. So that's our, our goal, obviously, is when we go out in the field, we do surveillance, or we target specific applications, and we, we show up. Our goal is to give everybody a clean bill of health and say, hey, no violations today. And we're working to that, not only through an increased presence out in the field, but the preventative side with education, public outreach, and interaction with the regulated community. A year-over-year reduction in total documented violations, that again, is along the same lines, both from a preventative sense, the proactive approach that we want to take to give everybody all the tools they need to comply, and then on the regulatory side as well, with just a really strong enforcement presence that's, you know, give everybody a clear, clear set of guidelines, and then hold them to that standard. And lastly, the number of pest control businesses registered with the county. I think that's a pretty good indication of overall, both the growth in the county and as well as the compliance rate. We do have a lot of unlicensed businesses, unfortunately, applying pesticides in the county, and that's been a real priority of ours, to get, get more of those businesses licensed, or hold them accountable. Also, you see a real trend increasing with, with growth in the county. You see a lot more structural and landscape-type pest control businesses, and I think that just reflects, is reflective of the department's overall workload as well. Our second priority is in the area of weights and measures device enforcement. And so, what that means is that each commercial weighing and measuring device in the county is registered with my department, and then we go out and we test those devices to make sure they're accurate, and that they are, you know, providing for, for fair, fair trade. We have approximately 14,000 commercial weighing and measuring devices in the county, and just a very rough ballpark that I think is a little bit conservative. There's about a billion dollars worth of trade that goes on over those devices in the course of a year in Placer County. So it's pretty significant if you're off by a couple of percent there. Some of the initiatives we're doing, we implemented just this year, a variable frequency of inspection on some devices. Some of our devices have extremely high rates of compliance, and so we've reprioritized where we spend our time to say, if something's accurate almost 100% of the time, let's shift focus to areas where there's not quite so good a compliance, and that's advantageous from a budget standpoint, and then also just from a program effectiveness standpoint. So that's been going very well so far. The number of devices registered and inspected, I think that, along with the pest control businesses registered, is another indicator of just where the county is going as far as growth and workload for the department, and keeping track of that. And then a year-over-year reduction in documented violations. Obviously, that's our goal, is to have everybody in compliance, and really helping, helping the regulated community to get there by providing them the tools and information they need to do that, and then holding them to that standard. So again, thank you very much today for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? No, well done. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
And now, it's time for the library. Good morning, Ms. George.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, members of the board. My name is Mary George. I'm the Director of Library Services. I'm happy to be here this morning to give you an update on the county services for the library. Right now, I want to spotlight some of the core services of the library. We continue to maintain a library collection that is diverse, and we strive to make sure that our collection is relevant and up-to-date. We've had some challenges with that, with our collection development budget lowering over the course of time. Our system has somewhat eroded, but we are working hard to develop and keep those materials relevant for our customers. The same with our technology. We're working diligently every day to make sure that we offer the computer resources that we need for our libraries, and that we keep them up-to-date so that folks know that we're offering materials for reference in a number of formats, including electronic books and downloadable audiobooks. We also strive to do a little bit of training with our customers so that we keep our digital literacy up-to-date in our communities. And then finally, we invest in our staff and work really hard to create a good succession plan, because it is our staff that creates the programs and the services that create lifelong, the love of lifelong, the love of learning and lifelong learning over the course of a person's life. Next slide, please. Okay, now, I want to tell you something that I'm very proud of. My staff has tightened their budget and, or tightened their belts, and we've been able to realize a one-time prior-year fund balance carryover, which we are respectfully asking to rebudget in final budget adjustments. We'd like to restore a portion of the library materials budget. We want to upfront, pay for our upfront OPEB costs, including the Assistant Director of Library Services, which was recently hired and will start in October. And then we want to replace some of our staff and public computers to increase our efficiency there. This one-time savings is really due to the absence of the Assistant Director for a good six months, and the costs associated with that. But also, I really want to acknowledge my staff, who did an excellent job of following my direction and really not spending from January on. We only funded emergency facility requests. We reduced our materials budget, and we, we did a really good job of decreasing our supplies as well, our spending on supplies, so we were able to carry forward. I'm proud to say we received a $20,000 air quality grant from Air Pollution Control Board. It's a pretty innovative grant. We, I, when I applied for the grant, I did a calculation that said that if people stay home and download audiobooks or ebooks, that they're saving emissions by not traveling to our libraries, kind of contrary to what a library director would normally do. I want folks to come to my libraries, but I'm happy to have the money that will recognize over 1,000 downloadable ebooks, which is up 60% from last year. So definitely a popular service for our community. And then, we have an increased property tax-related revenue, which will help us reduce our use of reserves for the following fiscal year. So I'm proud of that as well, because as Andy said, our reserves are dwindling, and we need to be very conservative in how we're using them. Next slide, please. And then to highlight, we're taking a lot of time to concentrate on technology this year, and I'm proud to say that we're working in conjunction with Administrative Services to do a comprehensive IT assessment of the library, so that we can capture our resources and make sure that we're not duplicating any IT processes, and that we can streamline our efficiencies. That will move us and propel us forward to be able to provide for our customers what is needed, and will kind of offset the burden that has been placed on the one IT professional that we have in our department to support all of our libraries and all of our technology. And we're going to develop a technology plan. Our technology plan for five years expired this year, so moving into the future, we really want to work closely with Administrative Services to make sure that we're all on the same page, and again, that we're not duplicating services, and that they can help us kind of propel forward. And then, we just hope to increase the technology that we can provide in our physical libraries. There are a lot of federal and state initiatives that are coming through. Folks will probably be coming to Affordable Health Care to sign up. We want to bridge that digital divide and make sure that we're offering e-government in all of our facilities. And in order to do that, we really need to make sure that our technology is fully functional, up-to-date, and able to be managed and maintained over the course of time. So that's pretty much the update on the library to date. Again, I'm very proud of the fact that we do have some final budget adjustments, and I'd like to recognize my staff again. And I'd also like to thank my, my ASO, Kelly Heikola, who's in the audience, and our Budget Analyst, Allison McCrossan, who offered just tremendous fiscal support to me, very good leadership, and without their direction, I don't think I could have saved this money.
Very good. Thank you. Supervisor Zerrin, you have a question?
Yes, Mary. Thank you very much for that report. What was the amount, again, of the year-end fund balance carryover?
It was about $237,000.
And what is your anticipated request for the restoration of your library materials budget?
$63,000.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Mary.
Thanks for your time.
Good job. You bet. Farm Advisor, Mr. Roger Ingram. Good morning, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Holmes, and members of the board. It's a pleasure to come and talk to you today, and here to talk about the Farm Advisor Program. The purpose of the Farm Advisors Office, which is part of the Division of Agriculture and Natural Resources with the University of California, is to serve as sort of that bridge and link between local issues, and also the research and information that is generated through University of California. Our job, and what we're trying to do in our office, is connect those resources to implement solutions to local issues and problems regarding agriculture, family and consumer sciences, and also youth development. We have programs in horticulture and small farms, livestock and natural resources. We have several programs in nutrition, 4H, and youth development. And also, we have a Master Gardener and Composture Program, as well as we oversee the Senior Community Garden as well. If we go to the next slide. As far as the budget slide, we have no recommended changes for our budget, so there's no final adjustments for us to discuss. If we go to the next slide. I have a couple of department priorities that I did want to highlight, and the first of these is nutrition, education, and outreach. And I picked this as one of our programs to highlight, because we're continually seeing sort of a melding of all of our program areas into moving into this area. We've got a comprehensive nutrition program that is including schools, early head start sites, as well as Head Start Sites, WIC, senior audiences, and also foothills farmer markets, to basically look at all segments of the population of Placer County to eat healthier through buying from local farmers. This is doing a couple of different things by getting people to eat healthier. That is going to be addressing the continued obesity problem that we have here in Placer County and across California and the United States. The other thing, by emphasizing the buying locally from local farmers, is that this is putting more direct dollars back into the farmers' pockets, which is helping, it's not totally solving, but it is helping with providing some economic viability. So the connecting point with that is it's helping maintain those farms as functioning farms, and so that is land that can stay as open, productive, working landscapes, which helps maintain that rural quality of life that many people are attracted to here. So some of the things that we're trying to do through that is, we are going through schools, and we are providing curriculum materials and some curriculum teaching to over 3,000 low-income students, both through curriculum activities that then teachers are able to also do for the rest of the year. We do a couple of curriculums, and then they have some tips on activities to do for the rest of the year on nutrition. And then we also are doing tastings through the schools as well. We will continue to conduct delivery of CSA boxes. This past year, we delivered to over 90 early-head start families, and we will continue that program for the coming year. We also will do two farm tours as well. We've been able to work those services through Natural Trading Company in the Newcastle area. In addition, we were able to, because early-head start closes for periods of time for summer break, we also were able to expand that CSA delivery program in a much shorter period of time to other groups, such as WIC families here in Auburn, also mothers in recovery, and also, we will be looking to continue to expand that. We've been able to distribute over $20,000, and that's what we'll be doing next year, in produce vouchers, again, to WIC families, mothers in recovery, teen parent programs at both Chana and Adelante High Schools, and also the general population, as we conduct tastings throughout farmers' markets and other venues to help increase awareness of local food and eating healthier. So far, we've had, we're a 70% redemption rate on those vouchers, which is also by being redeemed at farmers, is putting more money in their pocket. We're seeking to also increase sales by 20% of local produce by conducting over 20 tastings and samplings. We also will do another community dinner. We did one last May at the Methodist Church here in Auburn to connect up local people coming in to eat a meal. That actually was provided free to them, and then we had a suggested donation, which we converted like $900 in donations to vouchers that are going to get distributed at the Food Bank. So we're going to be continuing all of those, again, as a way of putting forth all of these promotional and hands-on efforts with the public to increase that awareness, get them to eat healthier, and also, to also help farmer economic viability. And if we could go to the next slide. Also, in conjunction with that, because the challenges of being in agriculture today, access to resources, and aging ag populations, and when I say resources, it's predominantly land, the value of land is so high, it's hard for an agricultural operation to get out there and buy property and be able to cash flow that property. So leasing things becomes the way to be able to expand operations. But a real comprehensive educational program for beginning farmers and ranchers, and also existing farmers and ranchers, that is including business planning. We have a six-week business planning course that we take people through marketing, helping them better understand how to display things, how to entice more customers to wherever it is they are selling. We're having networking breakfasts that is getting people from the ag community together on a monthly breakfast that typically will run from like November till about May, and then will pick up again in the fall, just to get people together to just talk about issues. There's not that gathering point, really, for a lot of our local farmers and ranchers, and being able to get them together to talk with other people really is a great exchange of ideas and understanding of resources. We'll continue with on-farm workshops and academies, and also beginning farming training. And over the year, we hope to be delivering over 160 hours of producer education through many of these on-farm workshops, which is helping them on business planning things, economic planning things, financial planning things, marketing, as well as production things, to help improve that viability. And just in closing, I think the other thing that we're also going to be trying to do, and making some more efforts on getting local food into many different audiences, is kind of looking at some more evaluative kinds of measures, so that we can get a better sense of, on what's happening, as far as really being able to impact behavioral change, as far as continuing that eating healthy, or family eating just a meal together, or kids helping with meals, prepare meals, as a result of some of these efforts that we're doing. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I sure appreciate the time to come and talk to you before today. All these efforts that we're trying to do are supported, you know, you're giving us this base budget to allow us to be able to have operations, and then, all these programs are bringing in over $700,000 in grants to be able to explode all these efforts out there to serve local community needs. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Roger. Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah. Can we go back one slide to 48? So on the education and outreach that we've been engaging in, and you've been engaging in, how, how are we bringing that to the far eastern end of the county, say from Colfax East? Because I know that people have asked me about the WIC vouchers. How do we get those to people at for the farmers' markets, for example, in the east end of the county?
Well, that, I think, is something that we could look at for the next year to Well, that, I think, is something that we could look at for the next year to, I mean, there definitely is a market up at Tahoe, and we could look at getting up into there and expanding our programs out to getting more to the eastern part of the county. One of the things, we got a big specialty crop grant that just came in. We finally had the money to spend in like November, and so we basically spent about the last six to eight months just getting our procedures down, working a lot through Auburn Farmers Markets and some other, down at the lower elevation markets. But I think coming into this next year, we're definitely looking at trying to expand into new markets, and so we'll make sure that we make that an effort to get more on the eastern end with the voucher programs going type of thing.
Great. And I'm coincidentally in meeting with Superintendent Larry, who is the superintendent of the Trucky Tahoe School, so I'm going to ask him to reach out to you directly to the education for the low-income students. I think that's, I think there's a real opportunity in the east end of the county to expand that as well. And, you know, I'm just delighted to see the things you're doing. I just want to make sure it's getting to, you know, out to Sheridan and up to Kings Beach and, you know, all the areas in the county that we serve.
Right. And I think because we are providing, there's an early Head Start site there in Lincoln, so we probably are drawing in from that Sheridan area and through our Nutrition Best Program, which is a Placer County First Five Commission-funded program. We are getting out into Sheridan. We're probably a little weaker in our link up at the higher elevations, though, and we have had some existing efforts with our CalFresh program to provide some curriculum, but I think with some of the efforts we're doing through specialty crops and some other in the Nutrition Best Program, we can certainly, I think, look at trying to expand into those areas.
Great. Well, I will be delighted to be your conduit, so.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Roger. I see no more questions, so thank you for the presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll now move to Health and Human Services. I'm double parked. Dr. Burton, welcome.
Good morning.
Nice to see you and your staff.
It's a team here, it is. Good morning. Rich Burton, Health Officer and Director of Health and Human Services. We're pleased to be here this morning, appreciate all the cooperation and leadership we've experienced with County Exec's Office and all the departments we work with, and actually all of our nonprofit and private-based community partners that are really the core of the continuum of what we do in providing services to the residents in Placer County. Certainly, in Health and Human Services, we do the best, next slide, the best we can to contribute is to the overall quality of life here in Placer County. Pleased to report, and I'm sure you all know that for years, Placer County ranks among the top five counties in the state year after year for about all of the measurements of quality of life, and it's a wonderful place to work, raise your kids, recreate, and be employed, and I'm sure it'll continue to be that way for decades to come. The responsibilities we have in Health and Human Services are primarily mandated responsibilities passed from the federal government to the state and down to local government in the county. They have to do with, for those that are low-income or unemployed, and helping provide food, housing, and employment services for the individuals, for families and children that are faced with difficult challenges, that frequently need services for a short season of time in order to regain this ability that they have previously had and go on and be self-sufficient. For those that are seniors or disabled, dealing with chronic and persistent mental illness, we provide services to assist them in being self-sustaining and thriving in the community settings where they can best continue to contribute to the overall fabric of our communities. And we have a number of public health programs that contribute to the overall well-being of residents, the protection of our food supply, and providing our businesses with the supports that they need to provide safe and healthy workplaces. And of course, we contribute on a regular basis and value our ability to participate in the overall care and well-being of animals in our community. Next slide, please. So, providing these services, each and every year, we exceed serving over 60,000 residents with unique services throughout Placer County. One of the things that we do is provide it in a model that's known frequently as a Placer Model. It's recognized by our different organizations across the state and other counties for being unique, and its fiscal orientation, for its ability to integrate in a collaborative basis internally within our departments and also out in the community. But with the years that, so that I'm privileged to work here, what has impressed me...
He's going to miss you.
If I get a nickel of heart, too.
Sure, that's, I'm right next, right?
What has impressed me as Placer Model is the commitment of all of our staff, and all of our team, and all of the people we work in the community to work as hard as the clients and customers that we serve. And they're the most courageous people that I know in this community, whether it's families that face the challenges, newly found unemployment, the loss of their healthcare coverage, facing issues that require them to be involved and benefit from our children's system of care, whether it's adults that are dealing with chronic and persistent mental illness and having to get up each and every day, decide how they're going to bring the strengths that they have and the new skills that they're developing to be able to live and thrive in our communities. Whether it's the businesses that are in tough economic times or keeping their doors open and keeping people employed, and struggling to make sure that they continue to offer health benefits if they can, to be able to have their employees be cared for when they get sick and are in time of need. And certainly, whether it's our individual children, youth that we serve that have been neglected or abused, and yet they're so courageous and strong as to identify new belief systems so that they can pursue lives that are full of hope and promise and heal from the traumas that they've experienced. We witness that courage each and every day, and I think it's the courage that we get from those residents that we bring into our work in Health and Human Services. And it challenges us to be courageous enough to be reflective of the work that we do, to believe that we're not the greatest thing on this earth, that we have perspectives that are limited, that we can learn from other people, and there are ways that we can do things differently tomorrow to serve our residents that will improve on how we did them yesterday. And in my experience, that's the strongest strength of the Placer Model. It's not a single organizational structure, or a claiming methodology, or a single piece of legislation, but the people that I've had the privilege of working with over the years, and the people that this county is privileged to have working in Health and Human Services. And so, as the Placer Model proceeds, it evolves over time. Currently, we have 40% of the resources that we are privileged to have influence over go directly to the private sector and nonprofit community, because they're the ones that are most uniquely placed to provide the best services for the residents in those circumstances. 60% of the overall resources are providing services that are uniquely best provided by county staff and employees. And many of those requirements are not locally determined, they're requirements that are passed down to us from the state, but we're committed, and no matter who mandates what from the federal or state government, the Placer Model requires that we evaluate all alternatives and continue to provide services best we can to the residents in the most cost-effective manner and adding the greatest value to their lives on a daily basis. The economic benefits certainly can be measured from a purely financial standpoint, the economic activity that's stimulated as a result of what goes on in just a portion of Health and Human Services related to our social service programs, food supplemental programs, child welfare programs. For $12 million of County General Fund that's invested, another $110 million of state and federal revenues are drawn down, and another $38 million of local economic activity are stimulated based on a study that came out of Cal Poly or University of California Sandley's Facebook. So, their economic returns are certainly human returns, and I'm privileged to have worked, and I look forward to the continued success of Health and Human Services. And now, the real leaders on a day-to-day basis are going to get a chance to tell you of the specific successes and priority-based approaches that our divisions take, and we'll start off with Maureen in Adult System of Care.
Good morning, Maureen.
Thank you so much. A high priority in the adult system of care is to provide, is to keep people safe by providing emergency response to persons who are a danger to themselves or others or in danger of being abused. This is accomplished with two programs. A small adult protective services staff work with law enforcement to evaluate 700 older adults and disabled adults in their home each year to keep them safe from abuse or neglect. Older adults, I guess all of us, want to live independently, and we work very hard to assist people to use community resources so they can stay in their homes and keep their dignity. The situations we encounter sometimes involve very complicated family dynamics with competing goals and interests that take time and expertise to sort through. And our integrated and coordinated approach that Rich was talking about really helps us offer all the services that, all services are available to each person that we encounter, and that's really determined based on their individual needs. The Mental Health Crisis Response Team is the second program, and that includes both county-operated and contracted units, and they assess 2,600 persons each year. This critical service works very closely with law enforcement and hospital emergency departments to make sure that persons who are at risk to themselves, harming, potentially harming themselves or others, are not able to take care of themselves due to a mental issue, are assisted to either return safely to the community or to receive the critical treatment services that they need. In the last year, 1,400 persons needed and received hospitalization, which was a challenge to our resources. So, in this next year, we'll be analyzing crisis and hospital alternatives and evaluating upcoming grant opportunities to increase our responsiveness to people and their families who need this level of service. Our two new mental health positions that are part of the final budget adjustments will assist with that effort, and I guess I just want to point out that the four positions in Adult System of Care are all 100% state-funded that are being added, and there is no use of County General Fund for those positions. Our next priority program is substance use treatment. We do know that treatment works and recovery happens in Placer County. We are excited to work with our criminal justice partners to increase treatment options for those persons who've become involved in that criminal justice system. We are sure that supervision and treatment will reduce recidivism for this population, and we will maximize our return on investments by prioritizing evidence-based treatment programs. We know that treatment is not necessarily a one-time event for success, but each year, 50% of the people admitted do show successful completion, and many receive significant interventions that help them be successful in the future. Services include a small county-operated unit and contracts with 12 community-based organizations that are creating a comprehensive continuum of care. I'll end with a story about one of our participants, I'll call Chris, because really, stories are the best way to show you how our system works. So, Chris was a person who'd been in the county jail several times over the years for drug charges, and she was there one more time this last year. While she was in custody, she took advantage of a new program we now have to offer through the AB 109 in custody treatment program, and she successfully completed it. We have two programs in custody, and they're both operated by contract providers, two contract providers are providing these programs. When Chris was released from treatment, she was not immediately linked, not immediately linked to services, but undaunted, she made emergency housing arrangements to ensure her sobriety. She kept in contact with that counselor she had met in the in-custody program, and she was then evaluated by the county services team. Chris continued to stay drug-free in the transition to community-based programs. She was then placed in a contracted transitional housing and outpatient treatment program. This is a model that's a great alternative to residential treatment, and in the last three months, with the treatment interventions she's received, she's been helped to continue to maintain her sobriety and learn about her triggers, which is a great way to prevent relapse. She's found part-time employment and is on her way to being self-sufficient. We know that communities are made safer when the people in them are both held accountable and have the resources to help them become productive members of society. So, I'll thank you, and I will now turn it over to Richard Konek, who's the Director of Children's System of Care.
Isn't next month Recovery Happens?
Indeed. And I'll be back to share more about that event with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. Good morning, Chairman Holmes, members of the board. The Children's System of Care staff and our partners continue to pursue creative innovations to bring the most effective services and supports to Placer's 85,000 young people. We're truly grateful to you for your continued support of those efforts. We continually measure many elements of our performance, and to that end, we created in 2007 one of the state's few integrated dashboards for children's services outcomes. This tool and the data it contains is supported by a strategic planning process that requires managers and supervisors to continually reassess their performance and adapt their approaches in how we partner with extraordinary community agencies who share the goals of child safety and effective mental health delivery. Two stewardship areas that I'd like to highlight for you this morning are the key mandates of the division. First, to assure a timely and responsive child protective service and provide related foster care, and the second event, second service is to deliver, of course, effective mental health services. In the next 12 months, our CPS teams will respond to thousands of referrals for potential abuse or neglect situations, eventually reaching in some manner some 2,500 young people and their families. Balancing each child's need for immediate safety with an awareness of the needs of that same child to be part of a healthy family, our practitioners and partners will seek tirelessly to assure that we respond to this community trust with the professionalism and diligence which has characterized the Children's System of Care in Placer for many years. We're pleased to be able to assert that the vast majority of our youth will be cared for by kin, and when no family is available or willing, more than 50 of these youth next year will find loving and permanent adoptive homes. A few years ago, we reached a new historic low in the use of group home care, residential care for our young people, and we'll continue that outcome as well. Over the last seven years, working in a unique shared collaborative with many key community partners, and with particular appreciation for the Latino Leadership Council, our native-serving partners, and our two community foundations, we've expanded with state dollars the matrix of nonprofit community services available, delivering mental health care to more than 200 youth and families each year. These preventive services have been, have built upon Placer's historic partnerships and are effectively making prevention more than a buzzword for 4,000 families who previously would not have gotten culturally competent support and care. These preventive services and supports will be critical in our shared future success as we implement mandated healthcare expansion here in Placer for children and youth. The state's expansion of these services, when effectively done in Placer, will deliver early intervention and evaluation services before behavior patterns become entrenched and before the young person engages in less-than-prosocial behavior. We'll be better positioned to respond to the effects of trauma and abuse when it occurs, and we'll be able to more fully support the effective wraparound collaborative with our very engaged probation department partners, keeping more than 150 families together while avoiding the trauma and significant costs of out-of-home care. The four positions requested in our final budget adjustment are 100% funded with non-county dollars. In closing, I do get some positive feedback in my role and want to share the perspective of one of our parents that was recently shared with me, quoting in a letter she sent to our staff. "I went to breakfast with a friend this morning. Who knew that I'd ever call a county social worker a friend? Five years ago, fresh out of a 20-year addiction to meth, I called CPS and demanded they either get me help or remove my kids. I started receiving help from them, and my life started to unfold, piece by piece. Wraparound services, counseling for myself and all my children, anger management and diversion programs for a son, medication and psychiatric help for my other kids, you name it, I received it. Without the help and assistance from the people that I now call my dear friends, I would never have survived. Today, I have not only a great job, a stable home, and successful staple children, but I have a wonderful, happy life. I'm currently enrolled in college, studying to get my degree. My son, who I never imagined would recover, has just graduated high school and is preparing for trade school. My life is now an amazing journey. I'm so grateful to the entire system that helped my family and me." End quote. I want to acknowledge the 160 teammates of mine in the Children's System of Care who daily seek to live their work and work their lives. In behalf of Placer's young people and their families, we're appreciative of your consistent support over many years, which has allowed us to reach Placer residents in their formative years, helping us to assure their health and well-being for a lifetime. Thank you very much. I'll yield now to Cheryl Davis, our Human Services Director.
Thank you, Richard. Good morning, Chair Holmes, member of the board, members of the board. I'm Cheryl Davis from your Human Services Division. Human Services has received 100% federal and state funding revenue with no required general fund match to be able to fund previously unfunded vacant positions in our department so that we can implement two significant initiatives this year. The first one is to implement the Medi-Cal expansion under the Affordable Care Act. Human Services is required to expand the best call center in the state so that we can enroll up to 14,000 eligible Placer County residents into healthcare coverage. Tied to that additional funding are two benchmarks that you see up on the screen. First, we have to be able to answer the phone, 80% of our phone calls in 30 seconds or less of those 14,000 folks who may call us. of those 14,000 folks who may call us. Plus, we are expected to enroll at least 75% of that number in healthcare coverage by 2016. I'd like to give a little acknowledgement to our county, your county IT and telecom department. Because of their efforts in helping us stand up this expanded call center, Placer County was the first county, again, to complete our checklist for the state in our technological readiness. We submitted our checklist in the first week of August, way before any other county. And additionally, as staff in telecom, Wendy Thompson, for a layperson such as myself, getting the call from the state to us sounds very easy, but it's actually four pages of connect-the-dots kind of technology that everyone was struggling with across the state. Wendy Thompson of your staff figured it out, and Placer has been the model for other counties in how they're going to get the calls from the state into our call systems. As always, Human Services, and with partners of county IT and telecom, have been driving this implementation so that we maximize our technology, so that we can be as efficient and as cost-effective as possible so that we reach these goals. We are on track and on target. Open enrollment is scheduled for October 1. We have our plans in place to be ready by the second week of September, so we've given ourselves a little bit of a two-week timeframe just in case something happens, but we are poised to be able to implement the Medi-Cal expansion enrollment for Placer County. Our second initiative is just as involved for us. As you may recall, during the state's budget crises, the legislature chose to exempt many of our welfare-to-work parents from the work requirements as a cost-saving measure. Then we were not required, if they were not required to participate in work activities, we were not required then to pay for childcare and other supportive services, and it saved Placer County's, what saved the state, stayed about $500,000 each year that they otherwise would have provided to us. With the budget turning around in the state, they have ended that exemption, and we are now required to reengage those parents, which we are very excited to do. Even during the exemptions, we worked very hard to try to get our parents to volunteer so that we could help them back into work more quickly. For Placer County, those exemptions actually amounted to about 60% of our parents not required to work. So we have about 800 parents that we need to pull back in and reengage in a new redesigned system. There is increased funding for more subsidized wage slots. In fact, we are now required to have 300, or 300 participants in subsidized wage in the coming year. That's a five-fold increase over the funding we received last year for the program. We are now back required to having 50% of our work participants engaged in activities when the state's actions exempted 60% of our population. There was no way we would ever get to the federal requirement of 50%, and we have to be at 50% by 2015, and we believe we will make that. Staff have already begun in April reengaging the parents into work activities. And finally, we are required to be able to move 300 of our participants off aid altogether. Your Human Services Employment Services staff move 800, it's about 780, parents into work each year. This benchmark is to get them off of all sorts of public assistance, not only cash aid, but food stamps and medical care, so it is a standard of self-sufficiency that we're driving for. So we will be spending a lot of effort on trying to get our parents to have increased training or education so that they can get the higher-wage jobs. Part of the funding that we are receiving will also be augmenting with our partner in your Business Advantage Network and Economic Development. They will receive funding from us for two additional staff so that they can increase job development efforts for us. The bottom line is the employers are our customers in this effort, and we work with them as a bridge to the employment community while we prepare our recipients so that they are the best candidate for that employer's job. We also would like to thank you for your support over the past year. We've had many, many initiatives coming forward that are taxing Human Services. The staff is prepared to continue to make you proud in our endeavors in implementing these initiatives that truly benefit the residents of Placer County. And I will turn it over to Wes.
Morning, Wes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. The Public Health, Environmental Health and Animal Services Division delivers a really wide range of services to our community, all the way from land use development and hazardous materials regulation to communicable disease prevention and animal services programs. Two of our key program areas I'd like to focus on this morning within the division is in the protection of the food supply and water supply at the retail level and our public health laboratory services. The Food and Drinking Water Protection Program is a collaborative regulatory function where we seek to build partnerships with our retail food facilities and our drinking water purveyors to try to help them find the best available practices for safety without just a heavy-handed regulatory approach. Our success is partly measured by our year-over-year reduction of violations to safety standards and our ability to conduct training and outreach classes to try to teach food facility employees and water system operators to control the critical control points, reducing the possibility of food or waterborne diseases through education within their daily processes. We conduct over 3,500 inspections of food facilities and drinking water systems each year to ensure that public safety is maintained and that our citizens and our visitors and tourists are protected. The second area I'd like to discuss this morning is our public health laboratory, which provides services across the entire division, including rabies analysis for our animal services program, foodborne illness investigations for environmental health, confirmatory testing for communicable disease in our public health programs. Our lab also serves our sheriff's department and our clinic for drug testing and communicable disease analysis, and it also serves as a regional lab for both Nevada and Yuba Counties and is rated as a biological safety Level III laboratory, which means that we can investigate live infectious agents. That level of certification allows our lab to function as one of the few labs in Northern California capable of testing bioterrorism agents such as anthrax. Our lab maintains training and performs drills and exercises to routinely maintain this level of certification and readiness in case of an incident within the region, and is a very important connection and community health and safety partner with our region. Lab staff complete analysis and reporting services on over 5,200 samples that are submitted each year for our customers across the entire region, and is expanding our capabilities currently to perform molecular analysis to provide additional services in the future. And we certainly appreciate the support you've given us each year to try to expand those services as we go. Turn it back over to Dr. Burton.
I'd just like to comment that one of the reasons I mentioned that it takes courage on the part of division directors and the managers and the staff in the department to pursue these different initiatives is that each and every one of them comes with a risk that it may not turn out like they think. If we were settled on doing just what we've known how to do and be safe and knowing what the outcome was going to be, we would never risk to achieve a better outcome. And each one of these division directors lead their teams in risking to get to a better outcome and yet being attuned to the realities and details of the day, that they limit the risk, mitigate the risk, and when they learn that if it's not moving in the direction they anticipated, they reorient and again redirect to be able to provide services best to the residents. So with that, I'd just like to wrap it up, and any questions, we'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Supervisor McHenry.
I actually really want to take this opportunity, since we're focusing on the programmatic aspects of the individual departments and the services we provide, to say thank you to Cheryl, Maureen, Dr. Burton, and Brooke Rhodes for all the work you've been doing with Elijah's Jar up in Forest Hill. Came to you with a concern about some flooring that they couldn't afford, and while flooring is not something Health and Human Services provides, you came up with some really innovative suggestions that are going to help them achieve their mission, which is providing food and clothing to their local community and also, you know, get to fulfilling their need for this flooring. The CalFresh suggestions that came forward, linking them with some other folks in the community who can help them with the actual flooring project, absolutely beyond the scope of what you do as an agency, not anything you're mandated to do, but just critically important to that community and the people they serve. And I really want to take the opportunity to say thank you personally, and I'm going to miss you. Thanks, Dr. Burton.
I see no more questions, but before you leave, I want to, first of all, thank you for your service. I think we hired you right when I came on board, we moved you up to that position, and it was the easiest decision that I ever had to make. It's going to be a tough one to replace you. And I want to thank you for your very poignant and compelling, touching comments about your staff. I often wonder how your staff gets up and does the job they do every day without being resigned to some of the challenges, whether they can get them accomplished, as you just mentioned, you don't know what the outcomes are. But you know what? I believe that they don't do it because it's just a job. They do it because it's from the heart, and your leadership exemplifies that. So I just want to thank you for that. And now we will. We'll now move to Child Support Services.
What's left of it. Chair Holmes, members of the board. My name is Troy Held. I'm your Department of Child Support Services Director. Was just told that that was a tough act to follow, and it is. Dr. Burton is almost like a hero here in this county, and so coming behind him is going to be a challenge. Our first slide here, before we talk about budget and program, I want to thank you for making August Child Support Awareness Month in Placer County. You've done that once again. It's very important to our program, and I'm very grateful for that. I also want to thank you for the time and the opportunity to talk to you today about our program and our budget for 2013-14. As you can see by this slide, it pretty much talks about our mission and our core responsibilities and services. We provide those services in Placer County. We provide those services in California. We provide those services across the United States and across the globe. So it is quite encompassing. We have had the same budget, give or take, for as long as I can remember, as long as I've been here, which is since 2006. And with that come increased costs and increased challenges, and so when I first arrived, we had between 55 and 60, maybe 60-plus staff. Now we're down to 39 to 43. And the state and the federal government ask for improvements each year, and when we get those requests, we actually add to those. We add percentage points to those as well because we want to do better than what they provide to us, and we believe we can. And that is done because of those 39 to 43 staff. They are hardworking and the most talented group we've ever had, and they too believe in what we do, and it is amazing to see how far they've come and how much work they've done and how fast and furious we are moving forward with the improvements that we've made. So I'm very grateful to them, and I'm very grateful to you for your support and to allow us to do that as well. The state governor's budget this year restored some funding, about $14.7 million, to the local administrative funding. We have two streams, administrative and electronic data processing funds, and the EDP, or Electronic Data Processing Funds, remained static. We also get what's called revenue stabilization funds, and that was because money was taken away several years ago, and it was put back, and it was given a different term. So that's remained static. The county can, there's the matching option, so the counties can use non-program funds to draw down federal dollars. The county sheriff's public assistance collections actually have been suspended the last two years, which has affected Health and Human Services, but that's been restored as well. And there's some discussion about how our program is going to be impacted by the Affordable Care Act, but overall, good news, other than the same static funding, but no losses and a restoration of funds, which brings us to about $6,288,391. When I came before you last year, I mentioned that I had this vision of producing a document that I wanted to provide to this board and to the public to show people exactly what we do and how we do it and the performance that we produce and some of the staff that we have. So I've done that again this year, and I would like to pass it out at this point. We will have these booklets available in our department, and the public can call or write, and we will certainly send them one or more if they request more. And this document, as last year, simply talks about the accomplishments that we have gained that we said we were going to do, and then provides the goals for this next fiscal year and our performance statistics as they go along. So with that, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you, and I'm now going to introduce Jeffrey Thompson. He's our new senior administrative services officer. He comes to us from Sacramento County with a wealth of experience. He's going to share a couple of comments, and we're very excited to have him.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Held. Good morning, Chairman Holmes and members of the board. My name is Jeff Thompson. I'm the new senior administrative services officer for Child Support Services, and after 15 years working with the county of Sacramento, I'm very proud to now work in the county which I chose to raise my children, so very happy about that.
Glad to have you.
Our department continues to refine its method of providing services to stay within our budget using only the federal and state revenues allotted to us. We use no county general fund monies. In fact, for every dollar we spend in our program for staff or supplies, $3.22 is brought back to, entire support is collected. For federal fiscal year 2013, we're projecting over $21 million in collections, and this information and much more can be found in the annual report that Mr. Held just passed out to you. I would also like to, again, thank the hard-working and diligent staff we have in our Rockland and Tahoe offices, as they are the key to our success. I'd like to thank you as well for your continued support of our program, and that concludes our presentation. So, questions?
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Shingnan, thank you. Thank you for the.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Let's see, we're going to move now to Veteran Services. Sure. You're going to be here?
I'm here, hold on.
Oh, sorry. Please.
Take your server.
Good morning, John Melrose. I'm the Veteran Service Officer for Placer County. Chairman Holmes, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to come before you and explain a little bit more of what's happening with my office. A little bit of interesting news right off the gate. When the final budget adjustment was due a couple of weeks ago, I got an email from the state saying that, from CalVet and the state, saying that the counties had received an extra $3 million for the CBSOs across the state. That equates to about $125,000 coming into Placer County for us to use for veterans' outreach. I'm in the process of working with Brian Hacker, coming up with a plan on how best to allocate these monies into the main goal of my office, which is outreach, outreach, and did I mention outreach? So that's the main plan with that outreach going, getting out into the community and providing the conduit between the veteran community and the community as a whole through my office to the Department of Veterans Affairs, and then we can go out and promote veterans' issues both locally within the state and to a very small part nationally. We're starting to get, we, as I say, CBSOs in the state are starting to get seats at larger tables where we can bring out information to the entities that can actually do something about it. The money does come with a small caveat. We have to go back to our budget, our base budget of last year, which requires an increase from the board of $9,668. If you give me that, I give you $125,000. If you give me that, I give you $125,000. So we'll see how that comes out. We are looking at that as one-time money and the state is going to want an accounting of how much, of what we did with that money. And like I said, working with Brian, we'll come up with some great plans and we'll be able to account for every dollar. We will probably end up rotating in extra help and temporary office assistance. The TOAs will probably be in for the entire fiscal year and then just rotate their time through so that they meet their requirements. Two of them will support my office and they will come in as one in the first six months, one in the second six months. Another one will be delegated to our local inter-agency network coordinator, our link coordinator. She works out of our office, but that improves our outreach throughout the county and actually some parts into the region. And the fourth TOA will be used to support the Veterans Treatment Court and get some of that help for Cindy Bigby who's running that court and help that information get qualified in so that we know exactly how many veterans we're helping in, at what cost we're saving the county and that kind of information. Next slide, please. And then of course, like I said before, once I have extra help and a fully staffed office, I will be out of the office talking to everybody who will listen and most people who won't. I want everybody in the county to realize that their veterans are here and that we want to make sure that we help them. We did have someone resign from the office. We're in the process of replacing them. We're going to see how we can use this extra money to help defray some of that cost from the county into later times. And working with Brian, we'll get that figured out as quickly as possible. There's going to be no service reduction in our offices as just a matter of course. We don't do that. The work will get done and we'll make sure that all veterans get taken care of. I take a very personal responsibility for the 30,000 veterans in Placer County and their families. And if we have any problems or any concerns, we'll address them quite quickly. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any kind of questions that the board would have.
No questions. I do have a comment. I want to thank you for coming out to the municipal advisory councils. It served two purposes. It let all the veterans that came know that you're providing their services and how they can obtain them. But it also let many of them know what a municipal advisory council is. Because they were actually showing up wondering what the other part of this meeting was all about, so.
Yes, I've seen that in just about every MAC meeting that I've been to and I'm looking forward to getting out and revisiting the MACs that I've already been to. So looking forward to it.
Supervisor Montgomery has a comment.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you not just for coming out to the MACs, but also out to the coffees, which is really, really helpful because that's a very different group of people who show up. And I also want to compliment you on your willingness to join me at Taco Night in Iowa Hill later this month. So I think, I think we'll get a whole new group of folks there for outreach.
Looking forward to it. And any of the supervisors, anybody, if you have any kind of outreach event, please let me know. I'll be happy to come out and do my spiel. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, John. All righty, we'll move over now to the assessors. Assessor in the building? She's probably out assessing.
I think let's do CEO, since we know they're all here.
Okay, all right. We'll go ahead and move to CEO. The CEO's office. Okay.
Yes, sure.
Do you want me to slide down?
Yeah.
I am.
Oh, where are you going? Okay, the players are moving around.
I have copies of my slides.
What is it?
We're going out of order.
Why do you want me to do that? Is that okay with you that we go out of order?
Yes, yes. I like being out of order, actually.
You're out of order.
She's out of order.
I gave you copies of my slides, but I see that they were able to get us up even though we're out of order. But good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. It is my pleasure to kick off the first of three CEO county initiatives that we're going to present this morning. My initiative, my initiative is employee engagement. And employee engagement is a strategy of communicating to employees accountability and leadership and their value to the organization so that they intrinsically want to be self-motivated and autonomous. A little over a year ago, the Organizational Development Division kicked off a leadership program and training for all managers and supervisors. And a result, the results of those trainings have shown us that we have a very engaged workforce. One of the ways that we measure that is improved safety record, which I'm going to show you some slides at the end, and improved customer service, improved productivity, work quality, and expense reduction. And if we can flip to my workers' comp slides. So two of the ways the insurance industry measures us from a workers' comp standpoint is our percentage of payroll, which is the amount of total incurred, our reserves and our payments for claims in each year that were reported divided into our payroll. And you'll see that we've, in the last three years, we've reduced from $1.14 to 36 cents. The California employer average for both public and private is $2.40. So that's one way we can save. And I've long thought that reporting of workers' comp claims is the pulse of any organization. When people are happy, they're not reporting claims. And when they're engaged, they're not reporting claims. And the second measurement is our rate of claims reported, which also has declined steadily over the last three years. So for every 100 employees, we're having just a little over six claims. And with that, I have to take any questions on employee engagement.
Any questions? Shingnan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's a, here's a next.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rui Cunha, Assistant Director of Emergency Services. Placer County Office of Emergency Services and Placer County Fire deliver a variety of services that, that have a compelling value to the public. And we do that primarily through a number of public safety agencies as well as a number of volunteer groups that we work with regularly that are engaged in communities where in fact, there are a variety of risks that they know about and they're working to, to resolve. As we look at our program purpose and we think about not just the actions, but really, why do we exist? Why, why are we part of this organization? Really to improve our community resiliency and our community readiness as a general rule. The optimal condition would be to arrive at a point where we are completely disaster resilient as a, as a community. We'll never get there. But the bottom line is there's always more that can be done and there's more that we can improve. And certainly that's what the Office of Emergency Services and Placer County Fire are working together, work towards all the time. As you take a look at our, our primary responsibilities and, and think about resiliency and what are some of the things that are, that we're responsible for in, in making resilient communities? One of those things is keeping emergencies small as possible, I might add. And there's a lot of work that goes into that. There's a lot of work in prevention, in mitigation, and then in response. Responding to emergencies as they happen with the appropriate force, with trained and well-equipped firefighters, with trained and well-equipped law enforcement is critical to making or keeping incidents as small as possible. Keeping incidents small is ultimately what allows communities to come back more quickly after incidents occur. Also educating on readiness, supporting private property insurability, making sure that we have the right mix of resources where they need to be so that properties can be insurable. Also working very closely with land development to make sure that land development is occurring in, in areas where there are, where we're not building in unmitigated hazard areas. And there's a lot of work that, that our office does in, in that alongside with all of the community and all other staff. When you think about community with specifically readiness, it's planning, training, exercising, doing all of those types of things. The Office of Emergency Services oversees that. We work very closely with Placer County Fire to accomplish many of those objectives. Next slide. Before you are a number of budget, final budget adjustments going into final budget. There we go. And those, those final budget adjustments, in addition to the Homeland Security Grants, which aren't listed here, are primarily related to dealing with some deferred maintenance in some of our volunteer stations within the Placer County Fire System. Very important, the Sheridan Station as well as the Thermaland Stations were well overdue to deal with some of that deferred maintenance at those two stations. And then also to deal with some improvements that need to happen at Station 70 on, on Wise Road. And so those, those are the primary budget adjustments that we have coming this year. I was asked to highlight one specific program and so I'm, I'm going to do that. When, when you, when we take a look at some of our highest priorities, there's a number of things I certainly could have discussed. Certainly assessing fire service and our ability to, to continue to function in the Dry Creek and North Auburn, Ofor Fire area. That's certainly something that I'll be doing this coming year. Also ensuring that, that we have the appropriate fire service system for new development as new development is coming into the county. That'll be something clearly that I'll be working on next year as well as in the years going forward. Additionally, continuing to seek ongoing mitigation funding so that fundamentally we can keep that, that mitigation work going, both for floods and fires, two primary hazards that we have all the time as we smell the smoke in the air today. But also very important, and the, and the project that I, I decided to highlight for you is, is Placer County OES has benchmarks, it benchmarked itself against the American National Standards Institute, of which there are 58 emergency management program elements, measurable elements, that we take a look at constantly and measure ourselves against constantly to determine where we sit as a county and a program, working with all of the departments, all of the various agencies, the cities, the town alumis and so on, in determining where we're at as a broader emergency management program. That is one of the, the key priorities. It's an ongoing priority. It's one that we will be working on forever until we become fully disaster resilient, hopefully at some point in, in time. One of those areas and just one of those 58 areas of measurement deals with measuring yourself against actual events, measuring yourself against exercises, different things that go on, documenting how you measure yourself, documenting fixes that need to happen within your emergency management system, and then taking those, those documented issues that come up and then working them down and, and making progress constantly through a period of time as we manage a program. Subject, any questions that you might have? That's all that I have.
Any comments? Supervisor Montgomery.
Again, want to take the opportunity just to talk about that emergency resilience a little bit and thank you for all your efforts in terms of identifying and purchasing and getting cited emergency generators at, you know, starting that process throughout the county so that when we open emergency shelters, if they lose electrical supply, we have backup generators to make sure that we can actually continue to provide the services we've told people we're going to provide at those shelters. I think it's just critically important and I'm absolutely delighted that we're starting to really move forward with that. And it's something that's going to be throughout the county over time, step by step, little by little.
Making progress.
Making progress. And I think the really important thing to highlight on that is the generators that we are identifying and going to be putting in place are all going to be portable. So if they're needed in a different community than the one they're cited in, we're going to have the opportunity to be able to move them to whatever community needs them. And I think that's just a huge, huge step for that emergency resilience. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
See no more comments? Thank you, Rui.
If I could jump in here, Holly Heinzen with the County Executive Office. We're highlighting these programs today, but I wanted to make a couple of comments about the County Executive Office, Board of Supervisors Office in terms of some of the final fund balance adjustments and changes that you'll see. As you know, there's a wide range of functions under a common department and some of those are operating functions that include the clerk of the board, the board of supervisors, the county executive office, and economic development that are largely funded by the general fund. You'll see a fair amount of movement among those without real new net costs. But I wanted to just point out to you, but some, that some of that is the result of some of our new initiatives as well as the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies where we've assumed some of that administration within the fund. For example, the Economic Development Initiative that you've heard a lot about has resulted in a shift of some of our resources from CEO admin to economic development. As we've redirected some of the resources, we think it better addresses some of the priorities of the board as well as of the County Executive Office. There'll be some additional focus in our office, although no new net costs related to priority-based budgeting, which we think will be an important initiative and coalesce not only our own office, but the work of other county operations. So I just wanted to provide a little context for some of the fund balance pieces that you'll, or the final budget adjustment pieces that you'll see later. And then turn it over to Dave Snyder because he will be talking about our Economic Development Initiative and how that moves forward, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Thank you for having me this morning. Dave Snyder, Director of Economic Development. Our program purpose, nothing new, attract new investment, expand the economic base, support the creation of primary wage earner jobs. We were very pleased earlier this year to welcome our new Business Development Manager, Paul Griffith, who's been on board now for about seven and a half months, I believe. A great addition to, to our, our office. Also includes supporting existing business and employment training and job development efforts through our Business Advantage Network, our partnership with Health and Human Services. Of course, encouraging tourism through our Placer County Visitors Bureau. And finally, of course, our commercial filming efforts through the Placer Lake Tahoe Film Office. Next, Brian. So recommended changes, Holly touched on those. We're pleased to see this year, for the first time in many, many years, an increase in Western Slope transient occupancy tax. That's some additional revenue for our Placer County Visitors Bureau and much needed based on their relocation and, and additional efforts in this coming fiscal year. Next, Brian. So how would, will we measure our success this year? It's primarily through identifying priority catalyst projects or, or gateway projects as we particularly are referring to them in North Lake Tahoe in lieu of the redevelopment agency. We're looking to form new public-private partnerships and develop work teams around specific business development opportunities. Measurable job and, and business growth in targeted areas. We're finally beginning to see that unemployment rate come down near 7%. I don't know that we'll get to the less than 5% days of past, but we're moving in the right direction for sure. Our Sunset Industrial Area Strategy Team has been in place now for a couple of months now and we're identifying a number of business development opportunities in Sunset. We're overcoming some infrastructure issues down there and looking at our land uses. And that team is in place and has been meeting on a regular basis now. We've begun to see an uptick in some inquiries from SAKDO and, and our brokerage community, some projects on the horizon, particularly a Verizon project, a, there's a textile firm that's looking closely at the Formica facility and several smaller projects down in Sunset. looking closely at the Formica facility and several smaller projects down in Sunset. Increasing the county's visibility and name recognition for the purpose of communicating with potential investors. This is a great example of employee engagement, and those of you that attended the picnic might have come to our booth and experienced our new branding logo project. Supervisor Weigant looks quite dashing in his attire this morning, but we...
Jim has a sticker.
Does he?
Yeah, what's he do?
Oh, see, the microphone was blocking it. He looks great, too.
All right.
Really does. But we're, you know, excited about the opportunity to use the new logo as a platform, and we're pursuing our trademark registration, et cetera, to protect our intellectual property there, and we're moving forward. So lastly, inventory and prioritize business development opportunities. I touched on this a little bit, but our platform there is primarily our strategic plan through the county's Economic Development Board. We're happy to see Lincoln moving forward with an economic development strategy. They're trying to align their strategy with our strategy, which is aligned with the Next Economy Capital Region Prosperity Plan and things that SACDO and others are doing. So we're seeing some great synergy amongst the economic development players out there, so we're very pleased with that. And that, I think, concludes my presentation.
All righty.
Yes, are there any questions about those priorities or other priorities?
Supervisor Grant? Yeah, Dave, I want to thank you for your presentation. I also want to commend you. I know I've brought up a couple of leads, if you will, and specifically the Live Nation opportunity out at Lincoln, and most recently a Department, California Department Transportation opportunity in your office, and your staff have jumped on those and are kind of taking a hard look at that, so I appreciate that very much.
Well, we appreciate those leads very much, as much as we like to feel like we're on top of every situation out there. We love the eyes and ears out in the field and keeping us apprised of what you think might be great opportunities for us, so thank you.
Does that conclude the CEO's presentation?
Unless there's other questions.
All right. Are we going to now assess her?
I haven't seen her back yet, so we could...
Mr. Assessor, would you, are you prepared to come forward, or?
Auditor.
Mr. Auditor, Mr. Auditor, sorry. Get you guys mixed up. What? Hey, I'm running this meeting, okay, Mr. Supervisor? I think I'm running this meeting.
Good morning. Thought it'd be afternoon I'd be speaking to you. Chairman Holmes, members of the Board, David, Gerald, Jerry. Thanks for having me here today. Andy Sisker, County Auditor Controller. I'm here to talk a little bit about what we do in the Auditor's Office, and I won't belabor the point of what our mission is because I've said it over and over again, but I want to do emphasize what our program purpose is in the Auditor Controller's Office. First, to provide quality and timely financial services to the county, department cities, and special districts, and schools, and accretions in cost-effective manner. And number two, to continually strive to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of providing services and financial information, including enhancements to our technological infrastructure. And when I talk about these program purposes, it really does touch every piece of the Auditor Controller's Office, and I'm going to touch upon that when I get to the third slide. But in the middle, I do want to talk about a change that has recently occurred. We could move to the second slide, in that one of the things, I know I talk about Acorn all the time, and it's because when I was first hired here, I was thrust into that project, and we had a successful implementation. But ever since day one, we have had this tremendous collaboration and teamwork with IT and the Personnel Department. And through that collaboration and teamwork, I think we, as leaders of those three departments, decided that maybe this is the right time to do something a little different, and why not centralize our Acorn Support Unit so that we can then tap into some of the other functionality in the Acorn application and start to turn that on, and hopefully create more efficiencies countywide. Through a series of meetings, we did conclude unanimously this was the way to go, and it's a perfect solution, in my opinion, for the long-term stability of our HR payroll system. Yes, it's tough giving up one of my most talented employees, but I know in the long run it was for the betterment of the team. Can we get to the next slide, please? So that leads me to our upcoming, basically our program purpose and some of the projects that we're currently working on and how we're going to be automating and reducing paperwork going forward. And first, I'll just start off talking more about Acorn and some of the self-service features we've been rolling out. As I mentioned at the last Budget Workshop, we've been working on this Direct Deposit Initiative. We have now achieved about 97% of our employees on direct deposit. Once we started to get more and more onto direct deposit, our next initiative was to eliminate the remittance advice, and we have successfully rolled out the reduction of that paperwork to four departments so far. I've been in discussions with HHS to get them to be my next department to go paperless. That's a very large department, and I think that department, once they get on board, is going to experience some significant cost savings by going to this more paperless environment. And then I think what's also great to hear from my departments is the ones that have not opted to be a pilot, I've got employees from other departments that have already said, "Please turn it off. We don't want the paper anymore." I've got 41 employees in the Sheriff's Office, 18 employees in the Probation Department that have said, "Turn us off," and we've done so accordingly. The next step with what we want to do in terms of automating self-service, we just rolled out an initiative where no longer does the employee have to fill out the federal W-4 form. They can now do that online without having to complete the form, either downloading the form from the IRS website, downloading the form from our county website. It's now all seamless and all paperless. I tested it out myself. My exemption changed perfectly. It was beautiful. I mean, this is what we wanted, was to eliminate paper. Now unfortunately, we don't have the state form online because, as you can imagine, PeopleSoft would have to design a program for all 50 states, and so they haven't got that creative yet. I don't doubt that they'll get to that point, and they'll have something rolled out to us where hopefully we can do the same thing with California exemptions. But for now, employees will still have to fill out that form. And then the last piece of our paperless efforts on Acorn is the W-2. We haven't rolled this out to employees yet because W-2s won't be issued until January. We are going to issue W-2s in 2014 for the 2013 calendar year, but going forward, employees will now have the option to be paperless with their W-2. They could go right online and actually probably get their W-2 maybe a couple weeks earlier than the others that would get them printed out, because I know a lot of employees probably are anxious to get those W-2s so they can file their tax returns and hopefully get some refund back from the federal government and state government. The next steps, really for the Auditor Controller, and I think this is one of the reasons why I was supportive of this Acorn centralized unit, is a paperless timesheet. And to get to that paperless timesheet, that's going to require a lot more manpower, a lot more effort, because it's going to have to turn on what we call workflows within the application, but once we start to turn on those workflows, it's going to open up many other avenues and many other modules within that application. And you may ask yourself, "Why can't existing staff turn on some of that functionality?" Well, it's a challenge. I mean, the staff and our offices are doing the day-to-day payroll. They're trying to keep up with the mandates that come down on us, and quite honestly, I think we've done a tremendous job at providing accurate payroll to our county employees. I did a quick measure of how many paychecks we produced. It was 73,000 paychecks, and only three of those were reissued due on air. Now, I know my payroll manager would say, "Andy, why are you highlighting that we made three mistakes?" Because she would say, "I want that to be zero," and that's where our office strives to be. But I think even though I may be taking some credit for that, we have to remember the payroll process starts in the Personnel Department, so they should also get some credit for that accurate payroll that we produce.
Since they're here.
The next initiative, so I'll get off of the Acorn bandwagon a little bit. We are now exploring using digital signatures on payment documents. We've just started this pilot project with one of our special districts, and so far to date, it has proved successful. And I didn't even ask the special district to send me an email, but I think I'd read the email from this district because she's given me some feedback on how the digital accounting is working. She wanted to give me an update on how our experiment in distant digital accounting is working from her perspective. She's installed Internet at her home, and right off the get-go, time and gas savings at the Stargate are what she's already seen. First, she wanted to compliment how helpful, cooperative, and friendly all of my staff have been in every step of the process, and she's also been able to get electronic invoices from some of the vendors, one of which she highlighted was Verizon. And this just highlights the point of where the industry and technology is going. You know, companies are now issuing electronic invoices, and if there's a way that we can embrace that technology, we're doing so. And so, again, great job. We're now planning to open up this type of what we call digital accounting. Really what we're trying to emphasize is having, using the technology that we have, using the Internet, using PDFs, scan documents, send them to us via email. As long as we've got the appropriate signatures on there, they match the signature cards, we're going to go ahead and issue the payment. Confidential document storage. You may not know this, but we scan 75,000 documents a year, and I want to open it up to scan more. And one of the things that we currently do not receive in our department is what we call confidential documents. Confidential documents are sensitive in nature. We talk about HIPAA requirements, et cetera, obviously litigation. We want that sensitive information. The backup is retained at the departments. We now have the capability of bringing those documents into our office in a secured cabinet for confidential documents by department. And so we're going to start working with HHS on a pilot to see if we can get them to start bringing in a lot of their documents into the SCIR scanning system. By doing so, it's going to, again, free up hopefully maybe space at HHS, storage costs. I mean, you can just start to multiply the dollars. I'm seeing significant cost savings. The next area, procurement card program online functionality. Your Board Member, remember, we did a, we're going to embark on a pilot project with Wells Fargo. What we're trying to do here, again, is to get more of the routine-type purchases, the small purchases, on a P-card. Maybe some of our vendors out there, we've been talking to them like the Staples of the world, will take a P-card for payment instead of using and writing a check. Again, this is something that we're going to be doing over the course of this next fiscal year. And last, I'll end it talking about Megabyte and some of our other system upgrades and some of our enhanced financial reporting, and kind of skipped over that. Let me save Megabyte for last. Enhanced financial reporting. What I mean by this is that through some of the technology that we are acquiring in our office, we can now close the books faster. And one of the things I really liked this year-end close is I'm being provided reports where I can pick up on anomalies, and I can see variances between one year to the next fiscal year. I can see where there may be a budget-to-actual shortfall, and thanks to Lena Shida in my office, she's been instrumental in designing a lot of reports that make it easier for me as a manager, and I think make life easier at management at the County Executive Office to see those anomalies and make sure that we correct those numbers before the books are closed. And then once those books are closed, we close, I think on July 31st, we started preparing the financial statements the next day. We've got the external auditors here earlier than we ever have, and is this a good thing? Yes, I believe so. The quicker we can get out financial reports to the public, the better for us as a county. And Megabyte and the other system upgrades. Megabyte is a unique application. I love the application because it connects our three departments, the Assessor, the Treasurer, and the Auditor. And not many other counties can say that they're connected. Yes, I know there's about 20 Megabyte counties, but I like this. I like being connected, and I'm glad I'm connected to two talented elected officials like Janine and Kristen, because it just makes it so much easier for our staff. But I can tell you, when I first started at Placer County in 2003, I would come in and we would do our year-end rollover, and the amount of paper that would be stacked up on a table would go all the way across and probably be stacked up this high with paper because that's what we had to live with back then to try to balance the property tax roll. Now, we don't have those stacks of paper. Those stacks of paper may be this thick because now we are utilizing some of that technology. Megabyte's been going through an upgrade to the .NET environment. We now can save things in different formats. We're printing less things than we have before. We're putting things in PDF. And probably the greatest tool that we use probably in property taxes is Excel. We accountants love Excel, and Excel keeps expanding its capabilities to the things that we can do, and again, it allows us to cut back on paper and utilize some of the enhanced features in an application like Excel that some of my employees love. Last, I'll just end it with some of the success and how we measure success in our office, and I, you know, touched upon error rates. Obviously, we want to keep those low. Obviously, customer satisfaction is important. I kind of shared with you the email from the Colfax Cemetery District. You know, we're always looking for revenue enhancements, ways that we can reduce costs, but more importantly, you know, what we appreciate is just being acknowledged. The awards that we receive for financial reporting, not only from the State Controller but from the GFOA, means a lot to us, but I think what always means most to our staff is the fact that they provide great customer service, and we get feedback from other counties and some of our colleagues working through our association. They're always very appreciative of the efforts that my staff go to provide documents to them, give them guidance on how we may have handled doing a TOT audit in the past. It's great having that open relationship and having that with our colleagues. I'll end it with a quote from Yogi Berra. "I am not going to buy my kids an encyclopedia. Let them walk to school like I did." Now, how does that baseball quote resonate with today's world? Well, first, when I think of that quote, I think back to my childhood days because I remember as a kid, I loved reading the encyclopedia. I remember walking to school for miles. That just doesn't happen anymore. But how does this relate to what we are trying to do in the Auditor Controller's Office? We're trying to get people to embrace technology, to not do things we've always done before. Stop pulling the old procedure manuals off the shelf. Don't look in books anymore. Really what you need is an iPad and a connection to the Internet to figure out the things that you need to do. So again, we're encouraging our employees to learn by doing it. That's the way of the world. That's the new, employees are going to be coming into the county, they're going to want all these new tools, and the way that they learn is by doing. And with that, I'd open up to any questions you may have.
All righty. Any questions, comments from Board Members? Seeing none, thank you, Andy, for your very diligent presentation and exciting. You made accounting exciting. I don't know how you did that. Shall we move to Admin Services? Is that okay with you, Supervisor Wheeler, because, you know...
Good morning.
Morning.
Chairman Holmes, members of the Board, Jerry Gammons, Director of Administrative Services. As I put on my glasses so I can see. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss our department's fiscal year 2013, 14, final budget adjustments and program priorities. With me is my Administrative and Fiscal Operations Manager, Melissa Nunick, and Kathy Buchanan, Deputy Director of Information Technology. I would just like to leave it at what Andy said, get us all iPads. No, 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 no. The Administrative Services Department provides a wide range of administrative collection, procurement, technology, and print services to county departments, special districts, and public safety agencies. The department budgets are comprised of four general fund divisions, Administration, Information Technology, Procurement, Revenue Services, and two internal service fund divisions, Central Services, and Telecommunications. The recommended changes since proposed budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014 include the transfer of two information technology positions into the IT Division's general fund budget. Andy made mention of one earlier. The two positions were assigned to the Auditor Controller's Office and the Personnel Department. These positions will now be part of a centralized, consolidated team managed by the Information Technology Division and will focus on its efforts on the Acorn system's operational needs, including providing maintenance and support of all hardware, software, and system applications. The Acorn system is the county's payroll and human resource system. In addition, this consolidated team will focus on the deployment of new system features and functionalities to meet federal, state, and local mandates and improve operational efficiencies for all county user departments under a centralized support model going forward. The second recommended change is requesting funding for two IT positions to support the Health and Human Services Cal-Win and Cal-Hear's programs. Healthcare programs are the largest growing programs within Human Services Division and will rely heavily on technology solutions to successfully implement federal healthcare reform initiatives. The third recommendation is... The third recommendation is requesting funding for professional services for the deployment of approximately 1,700 personal computers to meet Microsoft's April 2014 deadline for migrating from a Windows XP to a Windows 7 operating platform. Microsoft has announced the end-of-life and support for Windows XP and will no longer provide software upgrades and security patches for this platform. The fourth and final recommended change: request funding to perform a security audit and county network and financial, or, uh, perform a security audit of the county's network and financial systems. The audit will be conducted by an outside security firm with oversight from our security team. The security assessment will evaluate our current security posture, identify any potential vulnerability, and provide recommendations to mitigate risk. These final budget adjustments are noted on this slide, and expenditures are offset by revenues accordingly. The next series of slides demonstrate the administrative service priorities by division, including the metrics that are utilized to measure the success. The administration division provides management and oversight to the administrative services department. The effectiveness of this division is measured by the number of payment vouchers issued, the number of employee timesheets processed, the number of financial reports generated, and the number of TOT appeals reviewed. Information technology, this one. Information technology provides comprehensive planning, implementation, administration, and maintenance support of the county's data systems. The effectiveness of this division is measured by the percentage of system availability, the number of service requests completed, and the number of risks mitigated. Procurement provides centralized purchasing services to the county departments, and their effectiveness is measured by the percentage of cost savings and cost avoidance realized, the number of purchase order and contracts processed, and the number of surplus and donations transactions completed. Revenue services provides centralized billing and collection services, and the effectiveness of this division is measured by the number of hard dollars collected and the number of TOT returns processed. Our two ISF, central services and telecommunications. Central services provides reprographic mail, inventory, and records management services, and the effectiveness of this division is measured by the number of US Mail pieces processed daily, the number of inter-office mail delivered, and the number of records stored. And finally, telecommunications provides planning and logistical support for all county-wide communications networks. Their effectiveness is measured by the percentage of the system availability or uptime and the number of service requests completed annually. These units of measurements are currently tracked by our divisions and are utilized to improve the delivery of services and ensure the continued success of the programs and services we provide. In closing, I'd like to thank you for your continued support and, at this time, available to answer any questions your board might have with the Administrative Services 2013-2014 final budget request.
Any comments, board members? I might have missed it, but did you introduce your staff members?
Yes, I did.
You didn't?
Yeah, yeah. Melissa Nunnick and Kathy Buchanan.
All right, thank you. Okay, I don't see any questions, so thank you very much. Good job, Jerry.
You bet.
Oh, that looks like personnel. Oh, personnel. Personals, oh, what is it? Who wants to go, personnel, clerk recorder?
We all do.
Now! I didn't mean go, I meant...
Good morning. Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Board members, chair. Happy to be here again this morning, and I think I start almost every budget hearing with the same expression, and I feel it just as strongly today. I am proud to be a part of this county, and when I hear the services we provide, the lives we touch throughout this county, it just does my heart wonders. And that's part of who we are as the Personnel Department, and we have a nice program purpose mission statement, but really, we are the people behind the people that make those services happen, and we're proud to do that with an excellent staff. And before I forget, I have Lori Walsh, our Assistant Director, here today. Karen Mayer also. Yes, yes, there's Karen Mayer from our staff, which is just a small representation of the folks that do the work, that help do the work that the county sees, and so do our customers. So that's really what we're about. And so, there are quite a few programs listed up there, from supporting the Civil Service Commission to Automated Systems Report, Labor Relations. I'm only going to highlight one or two of those and intertwine them into the county initiatives, because we are here to serve. The county's priorities are set by this board, the initiatives set by this county executive officer, and then we are here to help our departments implement that. On the next slide, you'll see, you will see, the final budget adjustment was so eloquently and excitedly portrayed by Andy, and we are a partner in that of consolidating those Acorn staff into a single focus area where we can hopefully have an economy of scale and achieve some great things, and I don't want to underestimate what has already been created in that system. Those staff have done a phenomenal job. When you heard the number of paychecks that get produced with very few reissuances or changes on either of our departments, and that speaks not only to the system but the people who work so well together in that. So, enough said about budget adjustments. So let's talk about some of the countywide efforts and what Personnel does. And I'd like to highlight first for you, I've been speaking over the last couple of years about the legislative changes and the compliance and the kinds of things that we do to have to support that. And this year, we made a conscious effort to also expand our resources and our time to support some of those more proactive sorts of programs that help us achieve what we need to as a county. One that I want to highlight today is how our recruitment and testing program supports many of the initiatives listed up there today, combination of what we have done over this past year and what we're expecting to do next year. Many of our recruitment activities, our larger recruitments, our hiring, supported such priorities as you've identified as the South Classer Adult Correctional Facility, yes, I got that out, AB 109 realignment, the staffing of the HHS programs that you heard about today. In fact, this last fall, I believe, we hired 80 people for Human Services and Health and Human Services programs within just two months, which is an extreme undertaking to get successfully qualified applicants into their positions that quickly. We tested and certified names for interview out to departments, over 8,000 individuals. That represents a 43% increase over the last year and much more over the year before. So the question I would ask if I were you is, did you do more recruitments? And the answer to that is not many. And why is that? And that's a combination of a couple of things. Early in the 2000s, when we were planning for succession planning, we overhauled the civil service, testing, and recruitment system to be more nimble, to provide better customer service in the hiring process so we could meet their needs more quickly. We had a downturn, we didn't have as much hiring going on, but when it came back in, we were ready and prepared to go. And so, with the commission having approved those changes in the testing patterns, we were able to meet the needs of those departments in a very quick and short order. Our recruitments this past year were more externally focused, open to the public and other members, instead of a higher percentage of promotional increases of recruitments. And the reason for that, I think, is self-obvious, but I'd like to talk about for just a sec. When we had hiring restrictions of a pretty significant nature, we tended to want to promote from within, to use the trained talent we already had, reduce any OPEB upfunding costs, maintain consistency, move individuals around without adding to the bottom line of employees. When we're opening new facilities and widening our Medi-Cal expansion programs, we're looking for entry and journey-level people to do that work, not necessarily folks that can promote into it. And so, we expanded our outreach and did many more external recruitments this year. We also have reduced countywide, that's just not us, but countywide, less reliance on extra-help staff. As we've been able to fill those positions more quickly, we've been able, less, uh, huh, easy for me to say, less reliance on extra-help, to the tune of about 25,000 hours less, which is about 12 FTE equivalent over this past year. So the investment in training in those individuals stays with us as we retain those staff in permanent positions, and we appreciate our extra-help temporary staff. We need them, there are many operations that can't work without them, but we have found a way to be able to meet the permanent needs with less reliance on that group. During the downturn, we maintained presence at community fairs, community events, schools, outreach, job fairs, which was kind of an awkward thing to do when someone comes up and said, "Do you have any jobs?" And the answer was, "No, not really." But what we had set up, and I had talked to you about some years ago, was an automated recruitment system that allowed those people to at least put in their name for interest in things that became available over time, and so automatically they get, okay, this job is finally now open to the public to apply, and we automatically send them a note to allow them to, or to encourage them to apply. It did what Dave calls were each ambassadors, economic ambassadors of the county. It kept the county out there, and through some of the vignettes and stories that my staff have shared with me through those job fairs is that a good portion of the time, we'd have lists of county services, and we often hear people's life stories and why they need to work for the county and why they're the best person for the county. But through that, we also hear where they might need some county services, or they may not realize that assistance is available, and we were able to refer them to some of our departments within the county to get the assistance they need to get their questions answered. And that, we believe, is an important function of the HR department as well. Now, of course, we're in those job fairs, and we have a few jobs that we can offer, and we are certainly working with our schools in that outreach function to try to promote the next generation of quality workers for us and all local government. One other area I'll touch on very quickly, I know we're just about out of time, was the significant increase of classification reviews that we did this year. And that is to design job structures so that we are more effectively using our staff, not just for today, but for that succession planning, for those new programs, for those new jails coming on in the future. Examples, we did a, with a consulting assistance, did an organizational study for the clerical staff that work in our existing jail and how they're going to be used in the new jail. For probation, we took a look at their, they had generic general clerical classes, we were able to expand those to legal classes, to legal clerical classes, to relieve some of the workload efforts of other higher-level jobs that could have been consolidated and were in part being performed by individuals within those operations. That allowed them to deal with their increased workload, whether it be through the courts or AB 109 and things I'm sure you'll hear about this afternoon. Just this last Monday, we took to the Civil Service Commission for the Facility Services Department and their Maintenance Building Maintenance Division. They have alternative service delivery on how they provide some of their services, and we need to incorporate that into the qualification skills and abilities we test for at the various levels within the organization. Another example of how behind the scenes we help them structure what they need to be more efficient, more effective for the future, whether that means supervising internal county staff or external. One last example there were bus drivers in Tahoe. We had a requirement for California licensure, but we got some darn good drivers who were probably interested in working for us, but they had Nevada licenses and certifications. So working with the Public Works Department, we were able to take that, revise those qualifications, open a recruitment, to tap into yet another pool of very qualified, talented drivers that live in the area. And I know you're nodding because it is very difficult to recruit bus drivers anywhere, for one, and two, in Tahoe specifically. So certainly appreciate working with the departments on that area. One last piece of automation that we would like to tackle this year pending approvals through the system would be that automated performance appraisal system I mentioned last year. We had six demos. We know that there's good talent and positive programs out there, and working with Jerry, his staff, and CEO, we're hopeful to get a system that provides a more efficient, effective, measurable way to communicate between supervisors and managers the expectations and performance of our individuals and our employees, which ties back, of course, to what Mary Ellen was talking about relative to employee engagement. It all comes together and feeds into each other. So for measurement, we have some very generic sort of statements about recruiting and retaining highly qualified employees, developing, creating staffing solution, and ensuring compliance with best business practices, and that includes implementing healthcare reform and all the other things coming down the road. Those are non-specific now, but our commitment to you is that we are going to work with our customers. We won't be defining necessarily how to measure all that. We're going to ask them, what is important? How will they know we've got them the right person at the right job at the right time? How are we supporting them in the best possible way? So since I am between you and lunch, I will end there, and thank you all for your support of our department and our operations over the years, and that of the Civil Service Commission, and we look forward to another year of providing you service and support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for a very good report.
Thank you.
All right. You want to hit clerk recorder since they're here?
Yeah.
Are you going to be grouchy because you're hungry? Or are you...
Why would we? You're the guy that counts the votes. What are you talking about? Come on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Supervisors, the rest of the supervisors. We will be quick, I promise. Let me be the first, though, to say good afternoon to you, and thank you for taking us. I'd like to offer up the regrets of Jim McCauley, the clerk recorder registrar of voters who cannot be with you today, but I'm Ryan Ronco, your assistant recorder registrar of voters, and with me is Lisa Kramer, your assistant county clerk. And we, of course, appreciate the opportunity once again to discuss the services we offer to the public and to answer any of your questions that you may have regarding our upcoming fiscal year budget. The clerk recorder's elections office is a true service office. Not only are our core critical missions designed around providing services to the general public, but the vision set by Jim McCauley is for our office to be customer service-oriented, and that mandate allows our office to interact with the public in a unique and very satisfying way. We strive every day to treat our customers as guests, not pests. It also allows us to be creative, as the law allows, in finding solutions to problems. And I know you're familiar with our separate divisions and our program purposes, and I'll discuss them in more detail in the next couple of slides. Before that, I'll touch on our recommended changes since we last discussed our proposed budget. We increased our ballot printing costs by $100,000 to offset the very real possibility that the state will require that we provide bilingual poll workers and voting materials at certain polling places around the county in languages other than English this coming budget cycle, or, excuse me, election cycle. We increased our proposed transfer tax revenue by $100,000 based on our positive projections, and we identified $320,000 of one-time operational and equipment costs that will be fully offset by trust fund revenue. And then, getting to our highlighted department priorities, the clerk's office provides public access to vital records filed in Placer County. That includes marriage licenses, both applications and certified copies, birth and death records, fictitious business names. Also, where one goes to have a civil marriage ceremony or to be deputized to perform a civil marriage ceremony, and we're up 4% this year over the number of ceremonies we performed last year. To that end, we've been beefing up the services we provide in this area. For years, we've offered keepsake wedding photos and certificates and other mementos, videos and whatnot. We're now also seeing brisk business in our point-of-sale wedding rings, with 73 wedding rings sold this year to date. The recorder's office is also where one records property and other records. Our recordings year-to-date are up 10% from this time last year. We're working feverishly to have electronic recordation of documents online before the end of this year. This would allow entities like title companies, banks, and certain government entities to record digital or digitized documents with our office. And once we're up and running, we expect about 30% of our, or more of our business to be conducted in this fashion. And we're also seeing quite an increase in our passport services. Passport processing is up 27% this year, and passport photos, which we offer at our office, are up 29% this year compared to last year. Our highlighted department priority for this area is our continued push to provide accurate digitized records to the public. And as you can see, we measure success by timely availability of our records, the ease of searching these records, and the public confidence that is engendered by having access to these records quickly and easily. And then, in the elections office, the elections office conducts all federal, state, and county elections, and almost all city, school, and special district elections for the voters of Placer County. We have 204,200 registered voters, and that number is growing every day. Our highlighted department priority for this area is vote-by-mail voting. Voting by mail continues to grow in this county as voters enjoy the convenience of this service. 62% of our voters are signed up to receive their official ballot through the mail, and this percentage is augmented by voters who either live in vote-by-mail areas where they have no polling place, or by people who request one-time vote-by-mail ballots. So routinely, we see our percentage of vote-by-mail voters in an election to be about 2/3 to 3/4 of those who are participating in that particular election. And we measure success here by our enhanced service delivery, our minimized wait time at the polls, and the ability of... at the polls, and the ability of our voters to be able to confirm whether we have received the ballot and counted their ballot by means of an online tracking tool on our website. Thank you for the opportunity to present this budget to you today. I hope I haven't bored you to the point where there are no questions.
Well, it looks like Supervisor Euler has a question.
Oh, of course.
So every year, I take advantage of you guys coming forward to address the issue of the voting equipment that we purchased and then were disallowed by our Secretary of State from using its functionality. Just recently, I believe it was the state auditor's office did a report on some of these electronic voting machines that Secretary of State's decision rendered largely obsolete. And the auditor's report was fairly critical of the Secretary of State making that decision. Has that given us any opportunity to seek any kind of reinstatement of that functionality for purposes of actually being able to report votes earlier than midnight, 1:00 in the morning?
Well, the short answer is no. This, just because of the auditor's report, hasn't changed anything at the Secretary of State's level. However, I believe that the result of the report will get us to where we can be able to use this equipment again. Many of the Secretary of State candidates, because the current secretary is termed out at the end of this term, are talking about how her proposals and her requirements have not been in the best interest of the state. And I believe that on the heels of this report, I think we're going to be seeing some changes, at least some loosening of regulations that have been tightened down to the point where we couldn't use that equipment fully. So there could be finally a change for you, Supervisor Euler, in this regard.
That would be nice. Appreciate it.
Supervisor McCameron.
Thank you very much for the report, and I wanted to say congratulations on the number of wedding rings sold and the number of passport photos taken. I think that, I think that's a really interesting metric that kind of reinforces, I think, all of our beliefs that the economy is really starting to turn around. I think once people start getting married and thinking about traveling, the idea is there's maybe a little bit of discretionary income there that people are able to spend on things other than basic necessities. And so really good to hear those numbers. Also, really wanted to thank you for continuing the high school outreach programs and the pre-registration of 17-year-olds who will be 18. There are states across the country who are taking that specific option and opportunity away from 17-year-old future voters. And I am just so delighted that Placer County continues to support that and continues to make sure that we really have opportunities for people to vote and continue to vote. So thank you.
And thank you for your continued support of that program. We were very pleased to see a report from University of California at Davis that showed Placer County as being, again, and part and parcel of this program, the highest registered, or the highest county with, or excuse me, the county with the highest number of young registered voters and participants. And, you know, it's one thing to register them and to tell them how important it is to be registered, but the participation angle is the most important part of this piece. And we're really excited that not only do they register, but these young voters are participating in the process. And they feel empowered to participate, and that's great.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy lunch.
All right. Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn for lunch.
Till 1:00.
Till 1:00. Or maybe 1:10, something like that.
Welcome everybody, we're ready to start the afternoon session of our Board of Supervisors workshop. We will now hear from our Assessor's Office, Kristen Spears.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kristen Spears, Placer County Assessor, and with me is Pam Cummings, our ASO. I really appreciate the opportunity to address the board regarding the Assessor's Office activities and our budget. The purpose of the Assessor's Office is to administer California property tax statutes fairly and equitably, consistent with the state revenue and taxation code and the state constitution. One of the core but sometimes overlooked functions of the office is to develop and maintain Assessor's parcel maps and maintain the core layers of the county GIS system. And we have about 174,000 taxable parcels in the county, so that is no small task, and about 25,000 parcels that are actually non-taxable government-owned by various entities. The funds generated through the Property Tax Assessment Program serve as a key revenue source for public schools, cities, special districts, and the county. And on average, the county receives about 17 cents of every property tax dollar. Property tax revenue makes up about 54% of the county discretionary general fund dollars. So a primary role of the office is to assist property owners in jurisdictions and answer their questions regarding assessments. And in July, many of you probably received an assessment notice from me. We sent out about 170,000 notices. Between the periods of July 1st and yesterday, Assessor staff answered 3,980 phone calls. So it has been a significant increase. Our staff is trained that customer service is number one. It's our priority, it's our goal that each person who calls the office learns a little bit more about our property tax system and that we answer the question that they asked. It is a very complicated system, and it takes a little bit sometimes to get through to their answer, but we do our very, very best to do that. I want to take a moment and just thank Admin Services because they actually installed a new phone system for us this year, and it made those 4,000 calls flow smoothly, and we were able to provide very good service to the public. So kind of a little shout-out for them. It was quite a process, but they did an excellent job in the installation. Some of the almost 4,000 questions that we answered were related to our delivery of the first positive assessment roll since 2008. The majority of property owners in the county saw an increase in their tax assessments due to increases in the real estate market. We were kind of bracing for how that was going to go, and really, the call volume was high, but it was manageable. We did deliver that assessment roll, and it was a challenge, but we also were surprised because of those 65,000 properties that required annual review, really, when you think about it, 4,000, not so many. So we do review thousands of properties, we review them with a computer modeling program. There's 77 current staff members, so when you think about that, there's really no possible way that we could look at each and every property. It has been quite an adventure since 2008, when we started seeing these declines. And my hat is also off to the Assessor IT staff because we were able to articulate what we were looking for in a computer modeling program, and they were able to bring that forward and actually make it happen. So it's pretty amazing. Wanted to touch just a minute on where we are now. The average increase for single-family homes between January and June so far reflects a 28% increase. So that will be next year's roll that we're looking at. But to give you an idea of where we're standing at the moment, pretty robust real estate market. We measured the success of this Market Value Review Program through delivery of a timely assessment roll by June 30th. And it sounds like a simple task, but I can tell you that many assessors across the state regularly use a role extension and close their role in the month of July. So I'm proud that we do it in June, and it also really filters down to more efficient processes for my fellow very talented financial officers, the auditor, and the tax collector, and it ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable government-owned, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands of government-owned, non-taxable, and ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that, because when you're thinking about tracking thousands And in July, many of you probably received an assessment notice from me. We sent out about 170,000 notices. Between the periods of July 1st and yesterday, Assessor staff answered 3,980 phone calls. So it has been a significant increase. Our staff is trained that customer service is number one. It's our priority. It's our goal that each person who calls the office learns a little bit more about our property tax system and that we answer the question that they asked. It is a very complicated system, and it takes a little bit sometimes to get through to their answer, but we do our very, very best to do that. I want to take a moment and just thank Admin Services because they actually installed a new phone system for us this year, and it made those 4,000 calls flow smoothly, and we were able to provide very good service to the public. So kind of a little shout-out for them. It was quite a process, but they did an excellent job in the installation. Some of the almost 4,000 questions that we answered were related to our delivery of the first positive assessment roll since 2008. The majority of property owners in the county saw an increase in their tax assessments due to increases in the real estate market. We were kind of bracing for how that was going to go, and really, the call volume was high, but it was manageable. We did deliver that assessment roll, and it was a challenge, but we also were surprised because of those 65,000 properties that required annual review, really, when you think about it, 4,000, not so many. So we do review thousands of properties. We review them with a computer modeling program. There's 77 current staff members, so when you think about that, there's really no possible way that we could look at each and every property. It has been quite an adventure since 2008, when we started seeing these declines, and my hat is also off to the Assessor IT staff because we were able to articulate what we were looking for in a computer modeling program, and they were able to bring that forward and actually make it happen. So it's pretty amazing. Wanted to touch just a minute on where we are now. The average increase for single-family homes between January and June so far reflects a 28 percent increase, so that will be next year's roll that we're looking at. But to give you an idea of where we're standing at the moment, pretty robust real estate market. We measured the success of this Market Value Review Program through delivery of a timely assessment roll by June 30th, and it sounds like a simple task, but I can tell you that many assessors across the state regularly use a role extension and close their role in the month of July. So I'm proud that we do it in June, and it also really filters down to more efficient processes for my fellow very talented financial officers, the auditor and the tax collector, and it ultimately better serves the public. So that is one of our measures of success, that we do it on time. We also measure success by tracking the quantity and quality of production accomplished and still to be completed through an array of production reports for each division of our office. And when I say "array," I really do mean that because when you're thinking about tracking thousands and thousands of events through the system, it takes quite a process. We need to know how many each division has completed, where they are in the system, to make sure that we can get them through timely by June 30th. And finally, we analyze the assessment review and appeal requests for feedback because clearly if it's too high, people are not shy about letting us know. And so we look at those appeal requests and review requests and check to make sure that we are staying within some reasonable numbers. If there's a location that looks like we're off a little bit, then we'll go back in and make some of those adjustments. Right now. This year, I'm happy to say, I just checked in with the Clerk of the Board, that the assessment appeal filings are relatively low, given the assessed value increases. So I think the press has been helping us out. They've had, you know, 30 percent increases in home values in the Sacramento area, and clearly people are relating to that. Another positive aspect is when you're in a rising market and we're valuing to January 1st, by the time they open their notice from me in July, the market's already gone up a little bit, so that's a good thing. So there's some positive points here. At this point, we're gaining ground on the assessment appeal front, and we're actually resolving more per year than are being filed. So that is something new for us to celebrate, and I just want to take a moment and thank our partners in the appeal process, and that would be County Council for their expert support from Mr. Brian Wertz, the Clerk of the Board here who handles the administrative processes, and the Assessment Appeal Board members who are appointed by you, the Board of Supervisors, and really have been such a dedicated group of individuals. This has been a very time-consuming and challenging schedule for them to work through for the last few years, so really hats off to them. Another key priority for our office is to complete a growing supplemental assessment role. So we annually review building permits, we review change in ownership documents, and we identify and appraise those events that qualify as a supplemental event under Proposition 13. We receive this information on an ongoing basis throughout the year. At the present time, there is a 24 percent increase in building permits issued throughout the county from all your jurisdictions, and a 14 percent increase in change in ownership documents that are reappraisable events throughout the county. Both are continuing signs of economic recovery, but they also represent a significant increase in workload for us, so something else to think about. And I'll go ahead and save the best for last. Our customer service program, public service, is clearly a department priority. As I mentioned, our property tax program is very complex. It really gives the property owners the benefit of Prop 13 in a rising market, the benefit of Prop 8 in a falling market, that as the market has fluctuated throughout the last few years, they have had some very good questions about how their assessments can adjust. So we measure the success of our program for public service through continually improving our information that's out on our website. I'm proud to say that the Assessor's website is one of the most frequently that's hit in the county. We track our website traffic. We've improved our phone system, as I mentioned. We can now set goals for response time and track our service ratings over a period of time, how long people have waited, how many dropped calls, things of that nature. Last year, we answered 23,000 phone calls, 1,600 written inquiries, and believe it or not, we actually received quite a few thank-you letters, which we post to inspire our customer service techs to greater efforts. But it's nice when you, you know, are related to property taxes in some way, and someone says thank you, you kind of have to take a moment and appreciate that. So we do. Overall, we do not have any final budget adjustments for this year. We recognize that we operate the Assessor's Office on a very tight margin. By that, I mean that at the present time, our staffing is just enough to complete the number of anticipated assessment events, and we know that, as I mentioned, through our array of production reports, which is the only way we kind of ensure that we get everything done. I want to take a moment and just appreciate the support of the county executive staff, your Board, your aides. Thank you for letting me show up at your MAX and talk to your folks about property tax assessments. That's been very helpful, I think, in keeping our inquiries kind of down to a manageable level, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
All right. Any comments, questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you for a nice presentation. And thanks for coming to our MAX.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, we'll move to the Placer County Treasurer's Department. Treasurer Janine Windushausen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, CEO, County Council. Glad to be here this morning to tell you a little bit about some of the things that we do. The department has a variety of functions. The most familiar are the tax collection and billing, and our banking and investment services, but we also provide services related to the issuance of debt and the administration of debt, business license administration, and then the Empower Placer Program. We do have one recommended change in terms of final budget adjustment. When we prepared the budget for Empower, we did not anticipate the residential program coming up, so we have a request to increase that budget by $70,000, and that includes printing. Left at your places there, the examples of the print materials that we are using for the program, that those print materials have been developed with staff in conjunction with a graphic designer who were really pleased. The rate she charges is very, very low, and maybe I shouldn't say that, do you want me listening? But it's worked out really well for us. And so we anticipate really more the staff doing the direct marketing, and we have also increases related to contracts with Sierra Business Council and Rockwood Consulting for technical support and specific outreach with, on a case-by-case basis, with specific, on specific projects, not from a, in a limited way, on a broad basis. So an example is tomorrow, the Tahoe Trucking Contractors Association is having an anniversary event. Sierra Business Council will participate on our behalf in that event. They'll provide some support there. They're also helping us from a technical standpoint on a very large retrofit that we haven't received the application on yet, but we're working through to determine what the retrofits should be. And that project is also our showcase project for the U.S. Department of Energy Better Buildings Challenge. It's the Grand LeBachan facility. So that is our final budget adjustment that is recommended by CEO staff. Then I have a couple of department priorities that I'd like to talk about. Chose to focus predominantly on non-mandated and non-ministerial things that we work on. So the first one we're highlighting here is the financial project and issue support, and this is to help make sure that things that are planned can go through and aren't limited by the financing. So some examples of past projects that I'm sure you're familiar with are the Middle Fork Hydroelectric FERC Relicensing, the helicopter financing. Currently, the Board recently approved SMD III financing backfill through the Treasury. We have provided gap financing for the City of Colfax wastewater treatment plant upgrade, and we have provided interim financing for Rockland Unified School District construction. They had some holdup and some state funding and were in a position, they were going to have to button up that construction at a cost of about $1 million and a lot of jobs until they received that money from the state. So we were able to provide some interim financing until the state money got there, and they were able to proceed with that project. Ones that we anticipate coming year are providing lease financing for the purchase of four school buses, and also, we're currently working with the City of Rockland Redevelopment's Successor Agency on some takeout financing. It's long-term takeout financing on a, from a line of credit that they have. It will be under five years. So we've been working with that and their successor agency, their finance director, and the state finance director. The other program that we're highlighting today is the Empower Placer Financing Program. I know that you're all familiar with that program that helps property owners to finance energy efficiency and energy generation projects, and they can pay that refinancing back on their property tax bill. I was last here talking to the Board about that on July 9th, and at that time, I reported that we had five commercial projects totaling $713,000 and 12 completed residential projects totaling $419,000. Since that time, we have done a minimal amount of marketing at this point. We sent out an email blast to all of the contractors who have either expressed interest or have previously participated in our program, and we have received 30 applications totaling $735,000, actually closer to $736,000. And we have already been able to approve a couple of projects in the amount of $63,000 and given the contract or the notice to proceed. So we're moving along well in that program. As I mentioned, staff has been involved in creating a marketing plan and designing the needed marketing collateral, along with a graphic designer. Our next marketing effort will be to include a full-size flyer. In your packet, you have one that's a two-sided flyer. It will be very similar to this, but it will be a full eight-and-a-half by 11, and that's going to be stuffed in the property tax bills when they go out. So there'll be 174 direct mailing of that. And so we expect, expect that actually to have, that effort to have kind of a long tail on it, if you will, into December and maybe the first of the year, as people, over that time, look at their property tax bill and open those envelopes. And then lastly, we included something on, that is mandated and mostly ministerial, and that's the property tax billing and collection. Kristen mentioned that the Assessor, Auditor, and Tax Collector work together to produce that property tax roll, and one of our performance measures is getting that out timely. The sooner we can get that out, the longer that property taxpayers have to plan for that expenditure. They know what they're dealing with. Long, long time ago, we used to get it out on October 31st, just before the statutorily required deadline to do that. We have been able to get that, those bills in the mail the second or, excuse me, the third or early in the fourth week of September, and we're on track to do that again this year. And again, that's through the combined efforts in working with the Assessor and the Auditor. So we have ongoing interdepartmental interactions with the Assessor, the Auditor, and CEO, and I want to say that it's not just a privilege and an honor to work with them, but it's really a luxury. It's a luxury because we're able to work with competent, congenial, professional staff. And I want to take a moment just to welcome Andy Heath to that team. We're real pleased to be able to work with him. And I also wanted, like many of my colleagues have done this morning, tell a little, a story. Every year, we prepare a tax-defalted land sale, where we sell properties at auction to the highest bidder on properties that have had delinquencies that have run five years or more. If there are any properties that we have any kind of evidence that they're an occupied dwelling, we go out and do a personal visit to those properties. We want to make sure that the property owner is aware of all of their rights, the timing of the tax sale, that type of thing. This past year, when my assistant, Eric Wademan, and I went out, and Eric is in the back there, along with Cindy Burrows, our Administrative Services Officer, we went out to a property that was in very, very poor condition. The property owner came out to greet us, an elderly woman, and we talked to her, as we usually do, but we came back to the office and we contacted HHS, and we said, we reported that there was very substandard living conditions, and we were concerned about the welfare of this woman. By the next day, HHS had returned a call to me indicating that they had sent staff out there and that the woman was living below the federal poverty line, she was not receiving any services, and that she was eligible for in-home support services due to her health condition, and they were in the process of connecting her with other services and support. And then we worked with County Council related to the collection of the property taxes, and ultimately, it all ended very well, where she was able to get services, we were able to resolve the property tax situation without a serious impact to her. And so I just want to let you know, some of those things that go on that you might not think about, and we've had occasion to do that type of thing before, where we've observed substandard living conditions and children in the environment come back and called HHS. And then lastly, I want to take the time to thank the CEO, County Council, IT for their ongoing support. We couldn't do our jobs without the support that they give us, day in and day out. And then also the Board. It's always a pro-leasure to work with all of you as a Board and individually. I really appreciate that. Thought just popped into my mind, and that recently, I was invited to give a brief presentation to a Board in a neighboring county, and after that, it made me all the more proud to work with all of you. So with that, I would be glad to take your questions, comments?
Questions, comments?
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, Karen Kelsey.
Yeah, you were jumping around me a lot, so I didn't know if you were just going to skip me.
Well, you're always here, so I figured.
The slides are irrelevant to me, but I'll let them catch up. I did appreciate CEO's Office conforming those slides to our current presentation. During the past fiscal year, our office has addressed its recent staff losses, senior staff losses to retirement. We hired two junior attorneys, Renju Jacob in our litigation unit and Jennifer Smith in our CPS unit. We hired a new Administrative Support Services employee, Linda Rodriguez, to assist our ASO due to retirement of another employee. The only advantage that you have when you lose senior staff and hire newer people is you naturally get budget savings from that. But it's a little bit of a loss for the county as those people have to come into the system. But I think, I've learned one thing over the past year, that succession planning is a pretty important part of what we should be doing. At the same time we're doing that, we had a pretty busy year to keep up with various Board initiatives, such as the new era of the Middle Fork Finance, Middle Fork Project Finance Authority and the implementation of that power purchase agreement, the Regional Sewer Project that hopefully will be coming to the Board in the near future, the Empower Program, the residential part of that program, which was going to be the cause of most of the effort in that program, and as Cetera pointed out, the renewed focus on the West Placer projects, particularly Regional University and Placer Vineyards and Riola Vineyards. We've gotten even some new initiatives on the Regional University-specific plan. In addition to that work, we've been dealing with state and federal initiatives, like the Affordable Care Act, which luckily for employers, deadlines were put off a little bit, AB 109, which you'll probably hear about from all these people in green, and the RDA dissolution, which it was pretty intense. I think we're getting toward the position where it's going to level out to a new ROPS every six months. We still have two vacant funded positions that we hope to fill in the coming fiscal year. I think the Attorney position is particularly important to keep up the necessary level of support that's required for the increasing workload and our ability to respond to new initiatives, like we've had to do this year, when somebody decides to schedule a concert, for instance, in neighboring, in a jurisdiction close to us. And, you know, part of that is also driven by the economic recovery, where, you know, the land use projects, they're approved, so now they need to be implemented, and that creates a lot of effort on our part. So we're going to- So we're gonna, I want to hire that other attorney to get into that advisory unit, which is where that work needs to be done. As noted in the February workshop, we're a little bit constrained on hiring that position because we need the legal support position for that, and we ask for that in our budget, and the CEO's office is good enough to recommend half-funding for that position. So as we go out to our recruitment of our vacant-funded administrative position, we're gonna be looking for someone who has the legal experience necessary to let us accelerate the hiring of that attorney position. You know, one of the things we did during this year is we did some county staff training, and we did some special district training for Newcastle, and that was well-received. And I think that should be an integral part of what we do, although, you know, not a priority. But it's certainly easier to do training on a county employee group status rather than the one-on-one way we've been doing it for the past 20 years. I chose to just highlight a slide for our Adult, Child, and Adult Protective Proceedings Unit to talk about priority-based budgeting. I don't want to give it the wrong name. You know, we're one of those departments, like Nancy mentioned, the people behind the people. And our priorities get set by others, either by the priorities of the board, which, you know, can change during the year, the CEO's office and the departments, that's for our advisory unit, by claims and litigation filed against the county or employees that, or actions initiated at board direction due to the actions of others, and by child and adult protective services proceedings initiated by HHS staff. So our compelling public value that we provide to the county is the quantity, the quality, and the timeliness of our legal assistance so that the county employees that we advise will do things in the legally appropriate way and with minimum risk to the county. So when we get down to performance measurement, we have the tools to measure the quantity. Our case management system has been in place for quite a few years for all of our units. During the past fiscal year, the CEO and the board were good enough to let us expand it into our Child Protective Services, Adult Protective Services unit. So we'll be able to collect the kind of data that we need to collect in order to, you know, manage that increasingly, increasing and increasingly complex caseload by better tracking of what we're doing. And you know, the CPS unit is one of those units that has always incorporated training in their normal activities. So they've conducted, so that one of the things we'll track is the number of hours for, that we've, they've dedicated to training on preparation of court reports, preparation for court, warrant preparation. It's one of those areas where legal, as legal requirements change, the social workers have to be kept up to date on what's required so that we don't get sued and handle some of those things on the litigation side of the office. The difficult part is that quality of the legal services is difficult to measure. We know that we provide high-quality legal services, but it's hard to find a metric that will measure that. I think most often people use client survey, and they're good up to a point, although I've never seen one that rated somebody less than 95%. So, but we will be doing that over the next fiscal year because I do want to see where our clients see us at this point. I think that's one of the areas where we're gonna need some, a little help from CEO's office in determining what kind of metrics they want to see us develop in our office. Like I said, I think with our whole office on a case management system now, we can provide the data, but we really need to know what kind of data that you want us to produce so that it isn't just, you know, numbers. I don't think numbers always tell the story in something like we do. That's all I have. I'm open to questions.
Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, thanks, Jerry. I appreciate that. And just a couple of comments on measurement, you know, having been in several different law offices and owning my own law office. Some of the things that you might want to consider as far as being able to measure is whether or not, you know, you have to take a case to trial, whether or not you can get it resolved without filing a lawsuit, what the cost of outside legal counsel is to the organization, and whether or not you need it at a certain point in time. And also how your internal processes result in outcomes, you know, because there's a lot of different outcomes. And on any particular case that you may have, your outcome is dependent on, number one, your resource and the goal of the particular client. So you're absolutely right in trying to figure out, there's no scale to measure success because there's so many variables in, you know, in measuring that and the expectations and the outcome of the client, so.
Yeah, and as we enter this, we want to really, we've got the system. We want to be able to provide meaningful information to the board.
Sure.
And I think that outside counsel is probably one of those. I think that's been our most successful part of our model is handling our litigation in-house, so we never have the comparison of what it would cost the county to do it outside.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I kind of, in my alternate life, I kind of have the same position as you do for a lot of different governments. So as far as using the resource that you have, that's really the, is managing that resource in the most appropriate and effective and cost-effective way. So, but you so far have done a great job, and whatever help that I can, you know, be to kind of navigate through these variables, because I have to do that myself. I have to give a report just like you did every year to numerous governments and individual clients. So you have to be able to put that, for that particular client and what you do for them into a language that they can understand, number one, and that shows that you have value, so.
Yeah.
Any other comments for our fine county council? All right, well, thank you, Jerry. Appreciate that. And now it's time to move on to our public protection system, and we'll begin with our Mr. Marshall Hopper.
Hello, Marshall. Good afternoon, how are you? Members of the board, Mr. Bosch, Mr. Carden, it's a pleasure to be here today. I'm Marshall Hopper, your chief probation officer. I wanted to thank each of you for your support over the last year and your commitment to public safety. I'd also like to thank our hard-working, dedicated staff at the probation department for their commitment to public safety and making a difference in the community and the individuals that we serve. Today, I wanted to focus on two specific highlights that truly outline or highlight, if you will, the mission of our department and the role of a probation officer. You know, our local law enforcement officers out in our community and our district attorney's office conducts investigations and prosecutes cases. They do this to ensure public safety and ensure the rights of the victims here in Placer County. When the investigations are complete, offenders are sentenced and sentences are served, many of these cases come our way to the probation department for supervision as they're released back into our community. Some of these terms and conditions include attending treatment, counseling, drug testing, search and seizure, and often, many have specific conditions such as staying away from the victim and even children. Community supervision and evidence-based treatment is a critical component of offender rehabilitation, public safety, and is considered the driving mission of our department. Our department currently supervises 3,155 adult and juvenile offenders granted probation in Placer County, in addition to the 145 cases that fall under parole realignment. These cases are broken down and supervised based on the offender's individual risk scores to ensure that the low-risk offenders are provided the appropriate direction, but also to make sure that the high-risk offenders living in our community receive as much attention as possible and direction from the probation officer. Now, we're very fortunate here in Placer County. Our collaborative supervision approach with the Special Investigations Unit, SIU, and our partnership with Children's System of Care provides accountability for high-risk adult offenders as well as treatment and direction for juveniles and families. From our early intervention programs to the highest-risk AB 109 offender, all of our cases in Placer County receive appropriate evidence-based supervision. In fact, over the last year, our department conducted 11,500 unannounced home visits, 18,000 office appointments, and collected over 4,600 offender drug tests. These contacts remind offenders of their conditions of probation, holding them accountable as well as providing probation officers the opportunity to provide direction and support to change lives. In fact, on numerous occasions last year, several offenders have moved to Placer County and quickly moved back to where they came from. In fact, one high-risk adult offender moved to Placer County and complained that he saw his probation officer too much, and his quote was, "It's cramping my lifestyle." He moved out of the area. As we continue our supervision efforts, we also recognize that treatment and services are equally important to supervision. We cannot simply lock people up forever. The law does not allow for it. Therefore, eventually, these offenders will be released back into our community, and our goal at our department is to provide supervision and direction to appropriate treatment services. From the 12-year-old booked into our juvenile hall for his first offense, to the post-release community supervision case recently released after serving 13 years in prison, although both these cases have different needs, they do have one thing in common, and that is a critical need for services immediately upon their release because they will go back into our community. The most critical time for supervision is clearly the transition when offenders come back to our community. Our current services range from juvenile early intervention programs through our partnerships with Children's System of Care to life skills classes taught at the jail and out of custody by probation officers, as well as contracted AB 109 services monitored by the adult system of care. Moving forward, we will continue to work with our consultant to define and track measure, measurement goals to ensure that we are meeting those goals as well as using our resources effectively and efficiently. Now, looking forward into next year, I wanted to go over a few of the priorities that we're working on. In the upcoming year, we will continue to work with our criminal justice master plan consultant to redefine our programmatic goals and increase treatment and services to our entire population. Some of those goals include refining our supervision caseloads and pre-trial caseloads to make sure we are in accordance with national standards, also incorporating the use of technology to increase productivity throughout our department, but in addition, throughout our justice system. Some of these examples might include implementing a telephone notification system for our pre-trial population and our probation population to reduce court failures to appear, reduce probation apartment appointment no-shows, as well as increasing treatment compliance. This system here is really no different than the call you get on Thursday afternoon reminding you of your dentist appointment at 8:00, and you realize that you forgot about it. Another example is the implementation of SCRAM, which will be coming before your board in the very near future. SCRAM is a remote alcohol testing device which is attached to the offender's ankle which detects alcohol through the skin. This is a very effective tool, and it's a tool that we can utilize to promote evidence-based supervision, increase compliance with terms and conditions, as well as promote and assist in offender rehabilitation. And lastly, we are continuing discussions to develop a community resource center. A center specifically designed to provide services to adults as they make that critical transition back into our community. In working with our master plan consultant and reviewing the data, we anticipate this center to provide evidence-based programming, employment services, veteran services, as well as other types of services to assist in the offenders addressing their criminogenic needs as they transition back again to our community. These are some of the items that we're working on, and they're in the development stage, and we anticipate bringing these matters back before your board in their future. That concludes my presentation, and thank you for your time and support.
Thank you, Marshall. Is there any questions, comments from our board? No, thank you so much.
Great, thank you very much.
I'll now move to the district attorney.
Good afternoon, Chairman Holmes, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I wanted to take a moment to thank you for the opportunity to address you on the 2013, 2014 budget of the Placer County District Attorney's Office. Today, I have some members of my staff who are attending, Supervising DDA Clark Gielbach, Administrative Services Officer Nancy Appenop, and Auditor Accountant Rosie Drager. We're in the back. The Placer County District Attorney's Office is committed to improving the quality of life of the residents of Placer County by doing our part to make Placer County a safe place to live. We oversee the prosecution of all crimes occurred within the county and within our incorporated cities. In the upcoming fiscal year, we expect our prosecutors to evaluate, review, and prosecute 11,000 referrals for crimes. Our deputy district attorneys will make 65,000 to 70,000 court appearances on behalf of the citizens of this county. The subject matter of those many crimes will be even more varied than the agencies who have investigated them. Those agencies include the Placer County District Attorney's Office, the Placer County Sheriff's Office, Roseville Police Department, Lincoln Police Department, Rockland Police Department, Auburn Police Department, Placer County Special Investigations Unit, Placer County Building Department, Placer County Code Enforcement, Placer County Child Support Services, Placer County Air Pollution, Placer County Environmental Health, Placer County Health and Human Services, Placer County Probation Department, Union Pacific Railroad, California Highway Patrol, California Department of Justice, California State Police, CAL Fire, California Department of Fish and Game, California Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control, California DMV Investigation Division, California Department of Insurance, CAL EPA, California Department of Consumer Affairs, California Bureau of Automotive Repair, California Contractors License, State License Board, California Employment Development Department, California Parks and Recreation, California State Fire Marshal, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, the US Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Agency, US Marshal, Mountain and Valley Marijuana Investigation Team, and the list goes on and on and on. And I stress those, not to bore you, but to bring home the fact that basically, to emphasize the depth of work and the varied nature of the cases handled by the Placer County District Attorney's Office. Our office also provides assistance to those agencies in those criminal investigations. Last year, I asked you to approve funding for two additional investigative positions. You did so, and I stood here when I made that request and said that we were, that we were anticipating 6,000 service requests. In fact, over the course of last year, that number worked out to about 7,000 investigation requests. So I thank you very much for helping us with that. Our investigative responsibilities include narcotics, gangs, working undercover, planning and preparing field operations, search warrants, fingerprints, sexual assault cases, use of force investigations, forensic computer investigation, firearms expertise, child abduction, and homicide investigations, again, to name just a few. But our mission is not just to prosecute criminals, but to minimize the impact of crime upon the lives of those victims, witnesses, and their families by helping them overcome the effects of those crimes. Our Victim Services Unit will help them recover restitution, help them with reimbursement for therapy, help them manage the difficulties of the justice system, even assist them with funeral and burial expenses if need be. Last year, I told you that this particular unit dealt with 3,862 new victims. This This past year, that number was closer to 4,500. In addition, we will coordinate over 15,000 subpoenaed witnesses to the many hearings, motions, and trials associated with the prosecution of criminal conduct. This year, we again collaborated with the Placer County Law Enforcement Chaplaincy and our law enforcement partners on the Second Annual Victims Rights Breakfast that was held on Peace Officer Memorial Day. This event not only recognized the victims in our county, but it also honored the citizens who have gone above and beyond in supporting our public safety mission and in keeping Placer County a great place to live. As this board is well aware, the District Attorney's Office has kind of been on the forefront of the county's succession planning efforts, not necessarily by choice, but due to a significant group that hit retirement age at about the same time. With the support of this board, we are well underway in dealing with this loss of institutional knowledge and experience. We are determined to maintain excellence in prosecution by superior recruitment and training. Our record stands for itself. In the past 10 years, four of our prosecutors have gone on to become Superior Court Judges. In the last five years, three Placer County Deputy District Attorneys have been recognized as the outstanding Prosecutor of the Year by the statewide organization, the California District Attorneys Association. One other recently retired, Tom Beatty, was honored with the coveted Lifetime Achievement Award. But it doesn't happen without the necessary support personnel, facilities, supplies, equipment, and, most importantly, the commitment to public safety shown by this board. Part of next year's budget includes rolling over excess funds from this year to help us pay OPEB costs for five of those upcoming positions that we anticipate due to attrition. And again, we thank you very much for that as we move forward into the next fiscal year. It is our commitment to you that we will continue to develop innovative and proactive approaches to public safety issues. Past examples of this commitment include our two multidisciplinary units, task forces, if you will, that facilitate the prosecution of crimes to vulnerable victims such as our children and our elderly. Also, last year saw us form a new Public Integrity Unit that will focus on crimes that victimize the public in general, such as environmental crimes, welfare fraud, and public corruption. In the course of last year, we have been asked to join a handpicked team and become a leader in a statewide effort to bring two major international gas and oil companies to come into compliance with their underground storage practices. In addition, we have partnered with Placer County Environmental Health, Placer County Agriculture, and the Roseville Fire Department to resolve local environmental issues. We are committed to keeping the public informed as to crime prevention measures and other issues through presentations to citizen groups throughout the year. We are facing many challenges in the upcoming year. We continue to deal with the fallout of AB-109 and a pending federal court order that will likely cause additional inmate releases from the state to the local level by the end of the year, keeping in mind that these are the more serious offenders that AB-109 did not initially address. We continue to work to resolve our laboratory and toxicology issues. We spent the last year trying to pursue new options. These efforts did not come to fruition, and we look forward to meeting with the infrastructure team and other jurisdictions to explore the possibility of a local lab. In preparation for this hearing, I think we all, I join with Jerry, Mr. Carden, in trying to, it made you think about what value did you, what value does our office bring to the community, and how do you measure that value? And I join with Mr. Carden in saying that it's very difficult to come up with a measurement, especially when it comes to public safety. Too often, the criminal justice system is defined by its failures and not by its successes. When your mission is to seek justice, to do justice, success can truly only be measured one case at a time. Did we punish the offender? Did we provide that person with the tools and the knowledge so that he doesn't reoffend? Does a victim feel that they were supported and provided services that will help them through this terrible time in their lives? Does a victim know that the community stands behind them? The Placer County District Attorney's Office is committed to trying to make the answer to each of those questions a yes. We believe that Placer County is the best place to live in the state, and we are honored to do our part to maintain and improve our community, and we appreciate the board's support that it's shown us in the past, and we look forward to that support in the upcoming year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Allden Scott, thank you. Thank you for hanging out there. Now, we'll move to the Sheriff's Department. Under Sheriff Bell.
Good afternoon. Are we last?
You are.
Yeah, what's up with that? Great, for the next hour and a half.
Don't you dare.
You ran him off. Holy cow. Well, good afternoon. I'm Devin Bell, under sheriff, Placer County. Sheriff Bonner is at CEGIS. He's on a federal working group, and he is in Phoenix, where a quick check on my iPhone revealed it's 109 today, so he would probably rather be here. But he sends the Gillette team, Gillette, the best man can get, sitting back here, and to my right, our newest member, Judy Laporte. Sheriff's Office, as a countywide elected, provides services to nearly all 360, approximately 360,000 constituents. I'm going to touch on some of our core functions, kind of broken down by division. First off, field services. Our field services handles patrol. We serve the entire unincorporated area of the county. We're their law enforcement providers. Additionally, we have two contract cities, very successful relationships with the cities of Colfax and Loomis. Since 2008, we have tightened our belt. We have, in patrol right now, 9% fewer deputy sheriffs working than we had in 2008. These men and women, this year, responded to 61,573 calls. That's 169 a day. They made 3,147 arrests. 1,700 of those were misdemeanor, the rest were felony arrests, and coordinated 24 successful search and rescue missions. Those calls for service, that's an increase over the previous year of approximately 2,000. We also have a community services unit. That unit's function is to protect, inform, and educate our constituents through a variety of programs, including safety classes. We have a very successful Citizens Academy, and our continued commitment to our schools and our 20,000 students that we provide service to through our School Resource Officer Program. Our SROs provide education and support to the staff and students. They assist those schools with the development of their school safety plans. They investigate criminal conduct related to campuses and provide security on scene. The community services unit also facilitated our highly successful volunteer program. We have 60 volunteers. Most recently, you may have seen in the paper, Mac Dujimoto, who retired at the age of 93. Those 60 volunteers provide over 7,000 hours of service to our office and our community in just about every division and every unit that we have operating. Investigations, commonly called detectives, we have our special operations unit, our Crimes Against Property Unit, and our Crimes Against Persons Unit. This is a small unit, it's highly trained, and they're a dedicated team that cumulatively, they have a caseload right now of 700 active investigations and additional backlog of 3,000. It's 3,700 cases that they manage on a daily basis. Marshall touched briefly on SIU. I really got to blow the horn for SIU. That is a spectacularly successful unit. I could tell you that when AB-109, have you guys heard of this AB-109? It's going to be big. When AB-109 took effect, we took a very innovative approach, and we chose to spend money in building our SIU unit around strengthening our police partners. We build a multi-jurisdictional team. I can tell you, this did not happen anywhere else in the state of California, but the rest of the state looked, and they took notice, and it's starting to happen elsewhere now because it's highly effective. We look at our highest profile, our highest management risk individuals, and we assign them to that unit, and achieve a measure of accountability and supervision that nobody else in the state enjoys. They do a fantastic job. Support services. That includes our dispatch unit. Dispatch unit this year took 75,718 calls for service. That's over 6,300 calls a month, 207 a day, and again, that's up 2,000 over the previous year. They are, for all intents and purposes, the years and the voice of the sheriff's office for many, many people. Our coroner's office, this is one of our core functions. Our coroner's office this year investigated 775 deaths, and that's up 15 over the previous year. We also have a civil unit. They serve emergency protective orders, restraining orders, process court-ordered levies, wage garnishments, and sadly, process evictions as well. They've had an increase in levies over the last year of 25%. The annual increase brings our total to almost $400,000. CCW permits. This has been, we have an interesting phenomenon going on with CCWs. Between 2001 and 2008, we averaged 75 new CCWs a year, new people who wanted them. In 2008, that number went to 120 new ones. The total number was 734. 2012, last year, the number was 759 new requests. We had 1,946 active ones. So far this year, 613, for a total of 2,420, and we're projected to hit 1,150 new permits this year with a total of 3,096 active. That is an increase of 950% since 2008. Interesting phenomenon. I have three part-time investigators, retired and new tenants, that are handling those investigations. They are working five days a week, and we are doing 25 to 30 interviews because every applicant has to be interviewed a week. The backlog, people are waiting six months to get an interview. Corrections. AB-109, I'm not going to drone on about that. I think the board recognizes this is the most significant and sweeping piece of legislation, policy shift in public safety in the state of California in recent history. And yeah, the state is looking at, by year's end, perhaps having to release as many as 10,000 of their inmates to comply with a court's order. Our county has been impacted significantly. Currently, approximately 50% of our sentenced inmate population are realigned inmates. These are people that would have gone to state prison prior to realignment. Realignment has resulted in longer jail sentences of more sophisticated inmates within our facility. Additionally, our population total has steadily climbed to the point of us needing to release more inmates per federal cap. Can tell you, in 2010-11, the number that we released was 106. In 2011 and '12, at the early onset of AB-109, that number went to 189. This year to date, 413. As board knows, South Placer County Jail, South Placer facility is nearing completion, and we're developing a transition team to begin the occupancy process. This facility, when operational, will provide additional cell space, a modern medical facility, a modern kitchen facility, and, most importantly, program space, so we can provide a higher level of education, training, and behavioral modification to our inmate population, which can result in reduced recidivism. This facility will be the cornerstone for the criminal justice system. In conclusion, first off, I want to thank David, Mr. Bosch, and his staff. We don't always agree in our discussions, but I can tell you, there is a refreshing spirit of collaboration this budget year. I want to thank Mark and Becky specifically. They've worked fantastically with our staff. I got to thank our staff that put together the actual product. I'm not a spreadsheet kind of guy. I have Judy Laporte and her team putting that stuff together. They do a fantastic job, and again, the Gillette team that's sitting back behind me. We are presenting for you a balanced budget. However, for us to balance that budget, we're dependent on maintaining vacancies in a climate of increasing service demands. That's tough. This board has consistently done an excellent job of striking a balance between fiscal responsibility and maintaining public safety. I just ask that you consider that going forward. We're looking at a $2.5 million budget gap, and we'll get there, but any assistance that you can provide is greatly appreciated. The last thing we're asked to talk about is outcomes. How do you measure outcomes? Well, yeah, I have crime stats. I can talk crime stats. I can talk clearance rates and response times and all that. I think Scott kind of hit on it, our district attorney. I submit to you, the true measure of a successful criminal justice system, is this a place where you want to live? Is this a place where you want to operate your business, go to school, raise your family, and recreate? I think it is. Despite the tough times that we've had in front of us, I think, behind us, and I think they're getting better in front of us, I think we've done a good job, all of our partners. And no small part of that is because of your leadership, and I appreciate that very much. Welcome to take any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Devin. Any questions from Supervisor Montgomery?
I want to start by thanking you for such a comprehensive report, and I really want to also thank everybody throughout your operation because they do an amazingly good job in serving the community. I had a question about the coroner's position and the funding for that. The reason the issue comes up is I've had a number of people contact me about the length of time it's been taking to get a death certificate issued. Do we have any funding in this budget to augment that position?
I don't believe so.
No, we have a supplemental request.
Was not approved.
Okay. And then my other question was on, a couple of years ago, and I don't remember how long it was, I'm sorry, I apologize. I think it was three budget cycles ago, may have been four at this point. We did a loan from some of the Burton Creek dollars to help bring some additional facilities into the kitchen at South Placer, and I think the intention at the time was that would start to get paid back over time into the Burton Creek allocation. Is that starting to occur? And if not, can we try to put it on the mental list for next year?
I would have to, I think we'll have to research that and give back to you.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, because I'd love to see that new Burton Creek facility available.
As would we.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing then, Mr. Bell, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
You, Judy. Okay. Can you back up, Andy?
Come back to the, try to get some board direction so that the CEO's office can prepare the final budget to bring back to you on September 10. Certain requests that were not recommended with the proposed budget and considered as requests of funding becomes available, otherwise known as RIFAs, have been included with some of these final budget adjustments. There's a list that's coming around right now that tells you what those included adjustments were in the FBAs, and then which ones were not considered. The requests recommended for approval have been largely based on the available of offsetting revenues, so that was the qualifier for trying to get those to be approved. One of the things we're coming back to the board for is to assign, actually decide what is to be done with the unassigned fund balance in the net of the final budget adjustment that remains in both the general fund and the public safety fund, the disposition of the one-time balances. There's some options to consider that the CEO's office has put together, however, this by no means is representative of the recommendation. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation, there's about $5.78 million in the general fund that's available for one-time uses, and there's about $2.3 million in the public safety fund that's available for one-time uses. The administration recommends directing one-time funding available at recommended final budget be placed in reserves, consistent with the forward prescribed plan to direct available one-time sources, resources, to offset future deficits that may be incurred with respect to the funding sustainability of the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility. This is consistent with the five-year model that's been put together, the multi-year budget framework that's been put together, and it allows for additional funding to be available in the future, should it need to be available, in the event there are future deficits. And there are future deficits as identified in the five-year plan as part of the presentation today, specifically in the public safety fund and in the general fund for that matter. And until such a time that the revenues outstrip the expenditures in the model, we'll...
a supplemental request that would have augmented that to hopefully bring that six-month turnaround time down?
Now, staff to identify that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Holly Heinsohn, that amount was 135,000.
I'm, you know, based on that, and based on the just concerns that have been raised from some constituents, I would ask the board to consider funding that if there's a way that we can see forward to doing that. Just as a little bit of background, I had one particular contact this last year that was really pretty disheartening. An individual who was waiting on a death certificate on her father, and she was actually at the point of being about to lose her father's house, which was their sole inheritance, because without a death certificate, she couldn't move forward in making some required payments to, I believe it was the bank. And, you know, that's not the sort of story we want to hear. David?
Oops. Sorry. There you go.
I was wondering, have you had an opportunity to speak with Dr. Burton on that? In follow-up to a conversation you and I had, I spoke with him, and he was surprised that there was such a backlog and was going to explore why that occurs and whether or not there were opportunities to better educate doctors in the hospitals who could issue preliminary death certificates that could satisfy the issue without having to expand our coroner's operation.
Yeah, we had not had the opportunity to have that follow-up, but I will follow up on that, and I guess I'll just leave this for now as a recommendation. I think based on those conversations with Dr. Burton, I may ask him to come back and just present to the board about what the status is of that and see if there's a way that it can be resolved without putting additional county dollars toward it, which obviously would be best for all of us. But, okay, so for now, I think I will just leave that then. Thank you.
Any other board discussion regarding? Well, I think alternative A would work for me. I'd like to see that general fund reserve be back up to the 5%, so. Anybody else have any? Go back to that slide. There it is.
Yeah, alternative A works for me.
The amount required to get the general fund back to 5% would be 3.4 million.
Right.
And then an additional $116,000 will have to be added back to the contingency as well so that you have your 1.5% contingency consistent with the final budget adjustments.
I think that brings it up to 18.6 million dollars of reserves. Yeah. Yeah. I feel more comfortable doing that. Any other? Oh, Supervisor Duran, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I had a question with regards to the 2.42 million for deferred one-time infrastructure. Do we have a list of projects that we would undertake under alternative B to measure that to what the funding for alternative A would be? It's like it's roughly a million dollar size.
Yeah.
You want to talk about the workshop on infrastructure?
I'm sorry.
So, I think Supervisor Duran's question is really, what is the million-dollar delta between the alternative A and the alternative B, and do we have a sense of what projects would or would not be funded under the two different scenarios? And I think what we haven't yet said to the board is that we anticipate coming back in the fall timeframe with a series of workshops, one of which is to follow up on the earlier conversation we had about infrastructure investment committee activity and to really devote some quality time to talking about what are our highest priority projects? How did we arrive at the list that we previously presented in terms of the criteria that we used? In particular, Supervisor Yule's question about how does economic development initiative inform our ranking of those project priorities? In addition, Andy and earlier Mary George touched on the fact that we need to come back to this board to talk more about how we're going to solve the continuing shortfall in the library budget. So we anticipate four or five different dedicated workshops on very specific topics to give the board more opportunity to get deeper into the details on each of those subjects. So we'd be happy if there was comfort in moving with alternative A just for discussion purposes. We could certainly come back and talk about what would fall above or below the line with that supplemental infrastructure funding when we come back with the investment plan.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. With that, with that discussion, it's just, that's really the issue for me, is what's in the box of goods in that million dollars that we, you know, may want to discuss before we decide to throw another million into the reserve.
And I believe we could come back on Tuesday with that. Yes. Basically, today, if you want to wrap it up, we can wrap it up, and you can provide direction to us to incorporate either or any set of recommendations into the final budget that would come back in September. Otherwise, if you should require, have interest in additional information, we'd bring that back Tuesday and then request that you take similar action. So if you need additional time, certainly, we're happy to do that, and/or if you would like some additional information, we would plan to bring that back on Tuesday. If I could just add one note relative to whether it's designated to reserves or a contribution to infrastructure. David's right, we'll be coming back and really looking at how we invest in infrastructure. Some of those are for core responsibilities, some of those are economic development projects, and some of those are other projects that have been identified. I think fundamentally, from the perspective of our office, part of the interest here is not necessarily designating it for specific projects now or for infrastructure. We're really looking at those one-time uses and not adding to our ongoing operations because basically, we have a pretty good year this year with only two years of South Placer operation. The following year, we will have 12 months of operation presumably. So to the extent that it isn't used for ongoing operation, I think that meets our office's interests in setting the platform for the out-years for criminal justice operation at South Placer. I'd also note, there's a number of infrastructure projects that have been brewing that I know some of the criminal justice folks have interest in in terms of a crime lab, the morgue, Tahoe courts, and those will need to be folded in as well. So there's tremendous pressure on the infrastructure side as well as on the services side. Again, our interest would be setting the platform for future years for full operation of South Placer because that was the plan to close that deficit in the out-years, draw down a few years on reserves, have some of those other revenues come up, and so the interest here is just not adding to operating costs because we will need to absorb in the out-years, we'll need to use reserves in the out-years for full operation of South Placer.
Supervisor Wigan?
And so if I could just follow up, recommended funding is available. It looks like the delineation the staff is coming forward with is if there's funding for a one-time need and a one-time source, that's the basis by which recommendation is made? And if that's not the case, the recommendation was to not proceed with that, is that?
Well, I don't know that it's quite as close as that. There were many one-time requests that we did not recommend, so that wasn't the sole criteria. Primarily, if there were ongoing general fund or pub, ongoing general fund obligations associated with the request, it was an ongoing responsibility or funding issue, those were the ones we were very careful about not recommending additional funds to because at this point, we really see the priority of South Placer and the huge pressures that come with that. You know, there's, so.
So with the target on the September 10th date for final adoption, correct, of our budget?
Yeah.
I guess if we're going to have a public discussion about the infrastructure prioritization as per Jack's comments, I'm good with that, but I'd probably also like to sit down with that RIFA list and just have an update and more full information as to that particular recommendation. And I, you know, I could do that on my own.
Okay. And I will add one other item here. This RIFA list did not include the full array of requests from departments nor from the public. Departments requested about $12.7 million more than we included in the proposed budget. So this is a considerably whittled-down list from what was requested initially by departments in the proposed budget. So departments have done a tremendous job of recognizing that we really need to keep a fairly bare-bones operation without a lot of operational increases this year. These were the items that were recommended if funding's available, and we had further discussion with departments. Primarily, anything that was recommended came along with ongoing funding. Did that answer your questions?
Supervisor Duran, did you have? Oh, no. Sorry. So on the 28th, what, our next board meeting?
20.
20th. Is that going to be a public hearing for the budget?
Yes, although today is our budget hearing, so it would be appropriate to open it up to the public for any other requests or comments. That's your question.
All right. And I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public wish to address the board on this workshop issue? Seeing then, we'll close the public hearing portion and.
And I did have a question. You had mentioned, did you actually receive requests from the public at all?
You know, we did receive a request, and actually, I thought it was going to be on this list, and that was from the Arts Council who requested an additional $30,000.
It's on there.
Yeah. Oh, okay, good. I didn't see it. Yeah, so those were, that was the primary request from the public.
That was the only request that we received.
There were several that were redirected that we'd be looking at as part of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association funds.
I just wanted to make sure that if there were some that we hadn't seen, that we were aware of.
This is the primary one I've received, and I don't know that there were others received, any others that were received.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, thank you. Holly, since you brought up the Arts Council request, I wanted to just say that, you know, I read over the requests that came in, and while I can't support the additional $30,000 within this budget, what I would like to do is work with the Arts Council to do some outreach to some of the other governmental entities in, within the counties, the cities, to see if we can work together to help identify some additional dollars coming in. Since the Arts Council serves the entire county and all the cities as well, I think that's, you know, that's something that I would be really pleased to work with Angie Totti on.
All right. Any more comments from board members? All right. I think our work here is done today. Thank you. Did you have any follow-up? Any? All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your participation and your patience with us. Thank you all for coming, and thank you.